Right. Welcome to the second hearing of the inquiry into the coronial jurisdiction in New South Wales. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today. And I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal persons present. Today, we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including First Nations health and legal... Actually, no, we won't anymore. Legal services, medical experts, public policy organisations, representatives from government agencies, as well as, most importantly, families with lived experience of the coronial system. While we have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today. I thank everyone for making time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing, when available, will be placed on the committee's website. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments they may make to the media or others after they complete their evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry in terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should also do so through the committee staff. And by the same token, you can provide further documentation on notice if you wish to do so. In terms of the audibility of today's hearing, I remind committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. As we have a number of witnesses in person and via video conference, it may be helpful to identify to whom questions are directed and who is speaking. For those with hearing difficulties who are present in the room today, please note that the room is fitted with induction loops compatible with hearing aid systems that have telecoil receivers. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses, Mr and Mrs Topic. Could you please swear an oath or an affirmation, starting from the person on my left, Mr Topic?
My microphone's on.
Yep, your microphone's on.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Right, I should have specified to state your full name as well.
Sorry. Say the whole lot again?
No, just your name.
Ron Topic.
Mrs Topic.
Mrs Lisa Topic. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Now, thank you. Now, would either of you like to give a brief opening statement?
I would like to, please. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lisa Topic. Alongside me is my husband, Ron. We are the family of Courtney Jade Topic. Courtney was not just a beloved daughter, sister, granddaughter, cousin, work colleague and friend. She was an integral part of our closely knit family. She continues to be so. But sadly, we are now forced to live without her. Courtney and her three brothers were our awesome foursome. That has forever been torn apart. We are that family. Tragically and senselessly, our precious daughter Courtney was shot dead by New South Wales Police whilst in the midst of a mental health crisis on February 10, 2015, at 11:48am. It was her first psychosis to our knowledge. She was shot on the grass verge at the corner of Cow Pasture Road in Hoxton Park within 41 seconds of New South Wales Police arriving on scene. All calls to police were for concerns for self-harm, welfare check. As this was a sudden and unexpected and unnatural death, our family was thrust into and endured the coronial inquest process. Subsequent findings and all that those processes entail, it is a gross understatement to say that this was another harrowingly and frightening experience within the horrific journey that we were already living. Yet, we believed it to be a vitally important component of the process. We wanted the truth, transparency, accuracy and a fully funded investigation. We are here today to put forward our lived experiences of these processes. Thank you.
Questions, committee members? Who would like to start the questioning? Mr Carter?
Look, yes, look, I am. Firstly, can I express my... I'll leave it to the others because I'm sure they will as well. My appreciation for your coming and also my acknowledgement of your loss and what you've been through.
Thank you.
As I would understand it, there's really two parts to this. There's the one in terms of the internal police oversight of what happened to your daughter. And the second is the court experience that you had. And I know in your submission, you, in a sense, referred to both. But if we go to the court experience part of it, it seems to me that the first part of the exercise that is the cause for legitimate concern is the lack of information that you got as to the process. Is that right?
Absolutely. We felt we were excluded from the process and a process we had no concept of what it involved. We'd never had anything to do with the police, with courts, with anything. And it made it very difficult. Nobody was explicit with us in explaining what to expect, what to do. We had legal representation, obviously, so we were up on some of the legal technology. But the actual day-to-day proceedings, we were clueless, to be honest. And that added completely to our stress in a very tricky and difficult time in our lives.
Sure. So how long after... I think in your submission, you say, in a sense, somebody indicated to you that you might be entitled to legal aid. How long after Courtney's death were you advised that you might be entitled to legal representation through legal aid? And secondly, how long after Courtney's death was it that you actually were able to meet with a solicitor and start to get some sort of picture as to what might or might not occur?
We had no contact, just in context, with police from when the detectives from the local area command handed over to homicide for five months after that point. So it was only five months later when Detective Inspector Gary Jubelin was brought on board. And he suggested to us that we should go forward in terms of legal representation. So it was by a police officer that we were told that we can go forward five months after Courtney had been killed.
Right. So none of the local police that initially dealt with you provided... Because I think you make a reference, and again, there's been a lot of submissions, but I think you make a reference to the fact that the police who originally intended to tell you your daughter had been killed were pretty reasonable in terms of their approach. But they didn't give you any advice beyond that initial advice that they'd been a shooting?
The initial detectives, I was at work on the day, and they were wonderful, given what they were having to tell us. And they were with us for the first week. And then after a week... So Courtney wasn't buried till nine days after she passed, so we hadn't even laid her to rest yet. It was handed over to homicide. The detectives from that week had given us a card, a business card. Here's a business card if you need anything. And that was the end of the story. We had no idea whether we were criminals, whether Courtney was considered a criminal. We had no idea what was going on. We hadn't even laid our daughter to rest at this point. So we're almost... Well, we're in shock, absolutely. Nobody was clear with us. And we didn't even understand that there could be a coronial investigation until we were told five months later when it was suggested to us that you're entitled to legal aid, apply and so forth.
Right, right. All right, I'm going to hand over the question. I've got to whip out for what I think is 15 minutes for many. Please don't take that as any way, an indication of my lack of concern in terms of what's happened to you. Your submission is consistent with others that we have received in the past, particularly on the First Nations inquiry. So I get the point you're making entirely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr Shibridge.
Ron and Lisa, thanks so much for coming today and for your submission. And, you know, of course, we all share the empathy with you and the loss of Courtney. After the police turned up in the afternoon, and it was sometime mid-afternoon, is that right?
Late afternoon.
I was at work when the police turned up. It was 20 to 3. Records will say that she passed away at 11:48. They couldn't find us because we were clean skins.
Yeah. Then, can you tell me when you next had proactive contact from the system? If I could put it more broadly, police, coroners, councillors, support? I mean, you'd lost your daughter. When was the next time you had proactive contact from the system?
The cabramatta detectives, they had a job to do, which was to locate us, inform us. And then with our request and their suggestions, we all gathered back at Lisa's parents' place. So we didn't go back to the family home. They had boxes that they had to tick. They had to do a walk-through of the home. So we agreed to that, and I asked if I could be part of it. So I went back to the home with cabramatta detectives and we did a walk-through. We looked for a smoking gun. We looked for something that indicated what would have caused this situation. They took diaries, they took hard drives, laptops, iPads, that sort of thing. They also took medication to do a count-back on medication and that. An autopsy had to have been done, part of the process. And that, once they sort of got that out of the road, they indicated to us that once the autopsy was complete, then we'd need to go into the morgue and identify Courtney. And they were quite happy to be part of that journey with us. So by that time, we did transition back to the family home. There was media parked across the road and camped out there for days. We didn't want to interact with them because we had no idea of what just happened. We had no idea. We didn't know we were victims or criminals or whatever. So we just didn't want to go anywhere near the media. Cabramatta detectives did pick us up from the family home, take us to Glebe Morg, where we identified Courtney, and we signed off on that. And then they brought us home, spent some time with us and said, unfortunately, they have to leave us. That's the end of their jurisdiction. And that's when they gave us the business card for homicide.
And how long was that process that you've just described?
Well, like Lisa said, Courtney wasn't laid to rest until nine days afterwards. We weren't entitled to see Courtney until two days after the event because of the autopsy. And with that, there was a backlog of that sort of situation as well, where we had to wait for the autopsy to be carried out in a thorough and professional manner. So we didn't actually go to Glebe Morg for two days afterwards to see Courtney. And between that period, which was sort of three days later, and the nine day when Courtney was laid to rest, that's when cabramatta detectives signed off on us and gave us that business card. And from that moment forward, there was a five-month period where police in any form had contact with us.
So there's no councillors came to your house?
Nothing was offered, absolutely nothing. And we, yeah, we didn't know where we fit into the picture. From our perspective, we felt that, in hindsight, probably not at the time, that the police had all the power, if you want, in terms of knowing what was going on and that. And they hadn't... It's like we were nothing. It was like we were criminals and they'd just wiped their hands clearly off us.
And did anyone tell you that because Courtney had died as a result of a police shooting, did anyone explain to you clearly that there would be a coronial investigation? And was that...
Not at that time, no. Later, like later, but not at that time.
Five months later?
Yeah, five months later.
So then, I know it's tough asking you to do this. You got the business card.
Yep.
And then you're at home. What was the family going through at that time?
We were making funeral arrangements. We were surrounded by family and friends and loved ones. And we were just surrounded in this cocoon of love by family and friends and the parish. There was still that media contingent that wanted this family to speak. They had an assistant commissioner stand on the corner on the day, saying that New South Wales Police spent hours trying to negotiate and trying to talk the situation and did everything they possibly could and used every facility at their disposal to try and get a peaceful ending. But unfortunately, the girl charged at police with a knife and under the consequences, she was shot dead, which was totally false at the time. But that was a story that the police gave to the media on the day, on the spot. And that was carried through until three years later at the end of the coronial inquest.
You talk about the police PR machine that you put in play. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes. They were very quick to stand on the corner and say, we did nothing wrong. We did everything we could. We had all resources there. We had all the management there. We did everything that our training allowed us to do. But unfortunately, this girl charged at us with a knife and she had to be shot dead.
And of course, those police statements were entirely contradicted by the coronial findings.
That's right, three years later.
But we didn't know any of that till three years later. So for three years, we're very unsure of a lot of things.
Those statements on the day went nationwide to every media outlet.
And so for three years, there'd been this uncontradicted story about Courtney, which was false.
Yes.
Looking back on it now, do you... Well, what should the police have done differently, apart from...
They should have come to us and made us part of the process. The media was there waiting for something. Police gave them something. Then they came to the family. They wanted a response from the family. So obviously, they wanted to fuel something. They wanted, you know, something to manifest from this. And being in the situation we were, we knew something was very wrong. We just felt our gut instincts, something was very wrong. So we just decided to not go to the media at all, not go at all.
We know our daughter. We knew our daughter. We knew this, what was being portrayed in the media and so forth, and wasn't contradicted to us by any police officer or anything, was, you know, so far-fetched from who Courtney was. Courtney was a gentle soul. Yes, on that day, she did have a knife, absolutely. And through the inquests and everything, it was put out there that she took a fir... She had had her first schizophrenic episode that day, and she'd taken it out of paranoia. Now, we didn't hear all that three years later. So family and friends, like I said, they're still supporting us. They all knew, we all know Courtney, that's, you know, her work colleagues, her friends, you know, her preschool teachers, school teachers. But publicly, as in the media, social media, there was a lot of, very hurtful for us as her parents and for her siblings, put out there in the media. And particularly our oldest son, it didn't sit well with him. He didn't feel that his sister should be treated like that. And she wasn't here to make a stand and say, that's not me. And it wasn't corrected until three years later. And also, we made a point that we wanted to speak with the police commissioner, Mick Fuller.
Then, back then, we wanted to be an inclusive part of the process. We wanted to get behind closed doors if needed, you know, with the police and sort this out.
Things changed a little five months after.
They did.
You talk about Gary Jubelin coming on.
Yep.
Can you tell us what happened then?
He, from the get-go, that afternoon, he turned up at our home. My parents had gone to church in the morning and ended up at cabramatta police station. And Dad had got quite upset that the police were doing nothing for our family. And I don't mean just us, our extended family. And Gary turned up and he apologised profusely and on many, many occasions. And he said to us that he thought in situations like this that people who were involved with the police wouldn't want the police, you know, calling them and inquiring. So he apologised and said, he has said to us since that he learnt many things from us in terms of dealing with the public. He said, obviously, most of his core work was at the time related to those that were on the wrong side of the law, whereas we'd had nothing to do with the law. So it was all very new to us. And he took our wrath. There were times when, you know, we rang him and really, you know, let him have it and said to him, weren't happy about the point where the police investigate police. That was another whole issue. And he took it all on board and he offered us a transparent and, you know, a fully funded and a decent brief, yeah, investigation. And we believe he delivered. We were, yeah, couldn't fault him.
Yeah, just on that, Mr Roberts, do you have questions?
No, I don't know.
Ms Sharp, do you have questions?
Yes, sorry, I do. My apologies for not being in person. And thank you very much for coming today. I had two questions. One was whether you've had any reporting back as a result of the significant recommendations made by the coroner relating to mental health training for the police? And whether there's ever been any sort of... Is there still established communication around that?
Yes, there is. In fact, we've been working with the chief officer with New South Wales Police, the MHIT team, the mental health training team. We actually were there yesterday with, over at Collaroy. And we tell our story, or Courtney's story, to serving officers in regards to mental health and how they can see things from the other side of the situation. And it's quite difficult. But it's also, you know, we get very positive feedback. We had an officer come up to us afterwards from King's Cross. And he said to us, you guys are making a difference. We can't bring Courtney back, and if I could, I would. But there's a particular police programme stopper that is used. And they have mental health nurses in certain stations. And he has one at his station, this officer said, and he said, and it's saving lives. Mental health nurses are going out with officers de-escalating rather than perhaps ex-escalating and making a difference. And we had our last one for the year, obviously COVID impacted. But Matt Hanlon is asking us to go forward with him on that programme in a different format next year as well.
Thank you, that's actually very helpful. I'm glad that this supportive change happened.
We don't want this to happen to anyone else.
No. And the other thing, though, in your submission, that I just wondered if you could just expand on the committee is towards the end of your submission, you really talk about those really practical things that were for families when they're going through an inquest. And I'm just wondering if you could just talk us through that specifically?
Okay. Look, originally, I'd say, be explicit, break everything down. The people you're dealing with who are in inquest, they're in a very traumatic state, even if it's years afterwards. We're nearly seven years and we're still struggling, to put it mildly. We, yeah. I guess the original point is, it starts with resourcing, like any organisation. I mean, I work for an organisation and I know everything's about funding. But that's the core to this, to get the right resources out there to ensure that the right advice, inclusion of the families that are going through this trauma. Again, counselling access. We weren't advised about counselling, you know, down the track, we went down that path. But it was well after five months. And it would have been a lot easier, I don't know about easier, but a lot more bearable if we had somebody there guiding us from an emotional perspective through those early days. We were on autopilot. And that could have been very helpful to have somebody there offering the counselling from the get-go and also advising us what was ahead in terms of the process. We also found, when we went to inquest, we were at Glebe. We had our own room, which was helpful, that was a positive. To walk in there on that first day, and on that first day, we had already met on site of the incident. So we'd already met the coroner out there, police, and then we'd gone into Glebe. To walk into there for us, and it's still part of my post-traumatic stress at the moment, is if I see a group of police officers, it triggers my PTSD. Because that's all I can see surrounding my little girl that day. In saying that, we are working with the police now and they are not in uniform when we speak to them, fortunately. But they all turned up on that first day. The big brass, it was almost, it was very intimidating. It was very, from our perspective, we felt like we were being ambushed. And they had all the bling on and all their important appointments and so forth, including guns and that as well. And it had to be sorted out before we went in there, that they could be put away. They shouldn't have been on them. It did happen, but I found that very confronting. Because in my mind, these were the people that had killed Courtney. So irrespective, you know, our children were brought up to, you know, you respect the police, you respect all of that. So it was also almost a conflict in our mind as well. And for them to turn up, and they were sitting right beside us in Glebe. Now, I haven't been to Lidcombe Court, but I assume it might be a little bit different. But that was a big issue, having the person that fired the fatal shot sitting right beside us. That, it just felt like nobody cared about our mental health and our wellbeing and our loss, basically. I think simple, practical things, providing parking, that was a positive. Because you're in such a state, we had no idea what to expect. A councillor had taken us through the court prior and that had made us somewhat comfortable with what we were to expect.
The councillor, were they with them attached to the coroner's court? Where did they come from?
They were. The day we went in to identify Courtney, there was a councillor who came in with us from the coroner's court. We also had our parish priest at the time came with us as well. And this beautiful lady, she was a godsend. She was an absolute godsend. And she initiated afterwards many phone calls with us and also counselling. We would come back into Glebe and go through counselling. And it very quickly got to the point where the funding was well and truly used. And she spoke to her boss and said, would it be possible if I can continue to meet with these people semi-regularly? And it was approved. And we are ever so grateful for that because it made the difference from the coronial inquest perspective. She came with us, she was there every day, in and out for the inquest. When we, it was before we were to go to coronial inquest. We finally were going to be seeing the footage. Again, the police had seen all this, we'd seen nothing. So she organised with our legal team and she was there to watch Courtney die, which was horrific, as you can imagine. And that all, you know, for us, that meant the world. And she rang us after to debrief. Now, this lady was an angel. She was an absolute godsend. We're aware that she no longer works in that role. But she kept us tethered to ground in very, very traumatic circumstances. But she, yeah, I think, I couldn't fault her. She was beautiful.
Look, she was part of the forensic side of the coroner's court. She was there to meet and greet us. We were there to identify Courtney. And that's where her jurisdiction had stopped. She was to meet and greet us, she was to comfort us and she was to give us support during that process. And then that was to be the end. But we sort of took an attachment to her in that horrific moment of our lives. But we sort of took an attachment to her in that, that horrific moment of our lives. And she seen the, the stress and distress that we were in. And she took it upon herself to be in our lives for the next three years, for that part of the whole process.
That wasn't a guaranteed resource.
It wasn't, absolutely not.
Yeah, that was just something.
She went above and beyond, very, yeah, very much.
Looking back on it, having her there from that moment, from the start of the journey through the coronial, having that one resource there. The fact that she was with you throughout it, I assume, was really important and added value and made it much more useful.
Crucial.
She was our connection. She, she was the girl that rang me on the phone when the autopsy was being carried out and said, Mr Topic, I have your beautiful daughter here. Unfortunately, it's taking some time. This process is necessary and needs to be done now. It's part of a very important coronial investigation. And I will keep you up to date of procedures and I will, you will be the first person to know when you can come in. So her professionalism and the way she conducted herself and the way she, she connected immediately through the person that she was, her training and, and the position that she held was, you know, had us for the next three years.
Ms Sharp, did you have further questions? Ms Cusack, do you have any questions for these witnesses?
I've got a couple of questions which relate to. Ah, thank you, Catherine. Mr. Mrs Topic, I've got some questions which relate to the process. So you were told you might qualify for legal aid, you did get legal aid.
That's correct.
So you were represented during the coronial process itself?
We were, we were, yeah. It did change lawyers and that changed and throughout the process and then we met new people.
Were they legal aid solicitors or did you?
They were.
Brief private solicitors?
They were legal aid solicitors. They were brilliant.
Okay, and through them you were able to cross-examine witnesses, were you? You were permitted to do that?
No, we had to wait two years for the investigation brief to be complete and to be handed to the coroner.
Yep.
And then Gary Jubelin suggested that the brief would be finished November, December. And there would be a, a gap, break over Christmas and the good part of January and things wouldn't get back in the new year until early February. And he suggested that we come into head office with him and sit down and just roughly go over the brief of evidence before he hands it over to the coroner.
Okay, so he was doing the investigation for the coroner?
That's right, he, he was, at the time, he was head of New South Wales homicide, yeah.
Right, okay, so and he was doing this for the coroner?
No, no, he was doing the, the brief was for the police to be handed to the coroner.
That's right.
But before it got handed over, he, out of, he made the decision to contact us and say, I'll take these people in, my parents came as well. And he just briefly, again, reiterated Courtney did nothing wrong.
Okay.
And then it was handed over to the coroner for 12 months down the track.
But did the coroner have an inquest?
Yes.
Okay, and you were present during the hearing of the inquest?
Every minute of every day.
And were you able to, through your lawyers, ask question of the witnesses?
Through our lawyers, yes.
In court?
Yes.
Yes, we, we had a, we had a representation in court.
And was that a satisfactory process for you?
It was.
It was. They were wonderful, couldn't fault them. The only thing that I would say is that the police had twice as many as we did. Again, it comes, it felt to us like intimidation. But look, the people we had were brilliant, couldn't fault them.
Okay, and in terms of the outcome, the coroner made certain findings and recommendations. And I think Ms Sharp asked you this, do you have any visibility about what's happened as a result of those?
We do.
We do, yeah. We look from day dot, we wanted to sit down with Commissioner Mick Fuller and, and, you know, get a positive change and, and steps forward to, you know, our, our whole purpose of being here is that this never happens again. We don't ever want to be sitting in our lounge room watching the TV and seeing some family going through what we are living. And when we finally, we, we, we just didn't let it go. We wanted to see the police commissioner or the head of New South Wales Police, whoever that would be at the time. And we finally got to sit with, with Commissioner Fuller. And he turned around and said, listen, we've implemented nine of the 10 recommendations and we're working on the 10th. And this is the first time that we've taken the time to work through every single recommendation that the coroner has set.
And in terms of Mr Jubelin's or Detective Inspector Jubelin's criminal investigation, did anything emerge from that as far as you're aware?
In regards to?
Well, were any charges laid against anybody?
No, absolutely not, no, no.
Look, the Crown was represented too. They, they had their representation in court as well. They, they had a Crown Solicitor and, and a, a team as well.
And they were representing the police?
They were representing the Crown. They were representing the Deputy State Coroner who was looking after the.
Oh, counsel assisting.
Counsel assisting, yeah.
So there's the counsel assisting. And the police obviously had their legal representation.
And then we had legal aid.
Yeah, and they did instruct us that no criminal charges could manifest from this process.
Sure.
And if a situation arose that they looked like that they, they, someone might be sort of presented with criminal charges or in the place where they might be criminal negligence or anything like that, then the process was to stop. And then it goes to a different court.
Okay. So if you could change two or three things about the system, what would those two or three things be? I mean, I think you've touched on getting more information proactively earlier in the process.
Yep, definitely.
Having, for example, the counselling service you, you received.
Yep.
That support being earlier provided, more forthcoming.
Inclusiveness, it's got to be inclusiveness, you know. It's not just the police, it's not just the front line. There's a whole machine behind this. If, if, we are part of the investigation, we, we gave statements. It was our family that was involved, you know, Courtney was, was us. She was involved, which, which made us involved. We need to be inclusive in the process. You don't, inclusiveness doesn't mean talking to the frontline police, talking to the, the, the officers that were, you know, there on the day or anything like that. There's, there's a whole background to New South Wales Police. There's their legal system, there's a, you know, they have great resources, they have great volumes and, and that. We need to be part of the, the process.
We felt like we were outsiders, we weren't included. And that, early on, or even, I mean, after Gary came on the scene, things did change, but felt like they were treating us as suspects. We didn't know where we fit into this story, if you like. We felt very out of place, very uncomfortable and felt like we were being treated as though we were criminals.
Well, but that, that's also in the context of the police having made those early false statements about Courtney.
Yes.
Yeah, pos, yeah, I would say so, yes.
In some ways, the first thing the coronial had to do was disprove those statements about Courtney.
Yes.
How long was it before the police, anyone in the police said to you Courtney had done nothing wrong?
That was Gary Jubelin and that was virtually that, around the five-month mark.
Yep.
When he came to our house and our first interactions with him. And he sat around our dining table.
That was privately, that wasn't publicly. It wasn't until the investigation was, was as a brief of evidence and was handed to the New South Wales State Coroner.
And that was the first time there was any kind of official acknowledgement?
Official, yes.
And, and we still, look, New South Wales Police stood on the corner of Cowpaster Road, Oxon Park Road on the day, right? And, and gave their PR to the, to the media. And they turned around and they said, no more questions at this stage. This will be going to a coronial inquest because of the situation. And from that moment on, there was a blackout. So there was a blackout. They turned around and that's all they had to say. They just had to tell the media that this was under investigation and there was a blackout.
Basically, they gave their version.
Yes.
And then stepped away and there was no way for you to disprove that for years?
And they said to the media on the spot, on the day, condolences to the family. Now I'm going back to the station to, to check in with my officers because they're very distraught and very upset.
We felt like we were just a thorn in their side, is.
That was it, yeah.
From their actions.
And the whole situation, because they turned around and said it has to go to coronial inquest because of the nature of the operation, the nature of the situation, they were allowed to, to black it out and, and that was it, that was.
The, you, you are, you, you questioned the, the way in which police were investigating police.
Definitely.
It was police actions that killed Courtney. And what would, what would a better system be for you?
A separate and transparent organisation or department that is completely separate from the police. You know, and I, I still believe that now. And in saying that, I, Gary gave his all and did absolutely, was the utmost professional and did a fabulous job and we thank him for that. I just think everybody's reporting to the same boss. It's police and it's police. It just doesn't sit well with me, knowing that they, it appeared that they held all the cards. You know, I know everyone's supposed to be, you know, following protocols and so forth. But at times, why do you have the same organisation investigating the same organisation?
And you don't come at this with a sort of anti-police view?
Not at all, not at all.
This is about.
We're working with the police now.
This is, this, you're, having gone through this six years of this, that's actually the best system response as well?
Yep. We, and we said this yesterday at our police training. We said, you know, the officers involved that day did not go out to kill Courtney. But there were failings and they've come through, obviously, through the coronial inquest and so forth. And we feel, it's cruel. We get up every day and our daughter's still dead. It's Christmas coming up, she's not there. Any ordinary day, she's not there. We go to the cemetery to talk to her. If we can change that for one family, then it's vital. And it's not just what happened to her death, as in being shot, but the process leading up through the coronial inquest, the investigation and all that process as well. It, it's traumatic, it's beyond traumatic from the get-go. And then when you're dealing with things that you've got, have never been part of your life, you don't understand what they are, you're sort of getting mixed messages from different departments, which confuses you further, that adds to your trauma. It absolutely adds to your trauma.
We're at time. Mr. Mrs Topic, I want to thank you for your evidence and coming to give evidence today, which can't have been easy. And like other committee members, on behalf of the committee as a whole, I'd like to extend our condolences to you for your loss.
Thank you.
I don't think any questions have been posed on notice, but if committee members have any subsequent information they want from you, that'll be forthcoming and you'll have time to respond.
Yep.
Again, thank you for your evidence and your excuse.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thanks.
Miss, could you please state your name, the capacity in which you give evidence here today and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Sarah Crellin, the Aboriginal Legal Service, the acting principal legal officer. I solemnly swear and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. We note the submission by the ALS, submission 36. But there is a capacity for a short opening statement for witnesses if they would like to avail themselves of that. Would you like to do so?
Yes, I have a brief opening statement if I may.
Please proceed.
Thank you to the select committee in New, into the coronial jurisdiction in New South Wales for inviting the Aboriginal Legal Service to provide evidence at today's hearing. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the Gadigal People of the Orang nation, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we're on today. I acknowledge and pay my respect to elders past and present and extend that respect to any Aboriginal people tuning in today. I also recognise the strength of the families that I have represented through the coronial process and acknowledge my privilege of being able to speak to you today. The ALS is a proud Aboriginal community-controlled organisation and the peak legal service provider to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders, adults and children in New South Wales and the ACT. The ALS also provides representation to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families within the coroner's court jurisdiction, predominantly families who have lost a loved one in custody or in a police operation. There's been a substantial increase in the demand for these services in the past three years. Consequently, we have identified improvements that can be made to the practice and operation of the coroner's court. The coroner's court must be made accessible and appropriate for Aboriginal people as a matter of urgency, given the high incidence of Aboriginal people experiencing deaths in custody, as well as the far-reaching impacts of these deaths in Aboriginal communities. The coronial, coroner's court should be a therapeutic model and instead it has been seen to be a further traumatising experience. On top of the improvements to the process within the coroner's court, there needs to be a level of accountability for organisations like corrective services and justice health so that the outcomes are improved. Otherwise, going through these processes are for naught. Losing a loved one in custody is traumatic enough, but then to further entrench that trauma by asking people to participate in a process that sees no real change is cruel. We are optimistic and hopeful that the recent changes to the system will improve the delays in communication. But further to that, there needs to be accountability and action. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll proceed to questions from committee members. We might ask the two committee members who are participating via Webex, whether they have any questions. Ms Sharp, Ms Cusack? Ms Cusack, if you have any questions, please proceed.
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, Mr Khan, do you have any questions?
No, I don't at this stage.
Mr Shubridge?
Taking into account that we did the first notion, so I think we add that on top.
Indeed. You, you can, but I've given the call to Mr Shubridge.
No, no, no.
Okay, Mr Shubridge gives way. Ms Cusack, please proceed.
I just wanted to add, there has been consultation between the service and the police regarding the protocol for what happens when there is a, a death. And, and secondly, at what point do families get before that perhaps they should contact you when they unfortunately find themselves in this awful process?
The New South Wales Police and the Aboriginal Legal Service have a protocol that we are called when there is a death in a police operation. When there's a death in corrective services custody, we are notified by the corrective services, by their Aboriginal Services Unit. So it's often that we are notified of the details of the next, next of kin and we reach out to that person rather than the family being told to call us, we will call them.
Ms Cusack, do you have follow-up questions?
Thank you very much for that.
Okay, Mr Shubridge?
Thanks, Chair. Oh, thanks, Ms Crellin, for the submission and your attendance today. One of the constant frustrations that's fed back to my office is how narrow the focus of a coronial investigation is, the, the minutes or seconds leading up to a death, maybe a day. Whereas what you're pointing out in your submission is often it's the systemic causes and those deeper factors that would be more fruitfully considered at a coronial. Do you want to expand on that in your submission? And then do you want to tell us where you think the bounds properly should be in a coronial inquest?
In my experience, it's very often difficult for families to go through this process because the coroner's considerations are limited to the manner, cause, time, place, name of the death of the deceased. In my submission, the coroner's court is uniquely placed to deal with systemic factors that lead to over-incarceration of Aboriginal people. The coroner is in a position to address why that person was in custody or why that person was indeed wanted by the police on a warrant perhaps. In doing that, we could look at those causative factors as to why Aboriginal people are so overrepresented in the criminal justice system, whether that's corrective services custody or whether that's come to the attention of police. Often families feel really. Often families feel really upset that the issues that upset them, why was my loved one in custody for just four months, they were about to get out? Why was my loved one in custody at all when they could have been out on bail with me? Those are not factors that the coroner's able to consider currently with the current act. And that is very traumatic because we, we tell the family that they will receive answers through this process, but often the answers they receive are very limited, they're indeed, your loved one had a heart attack running away from police, there was a warrant out for their arrest. We don't go into, is there another way with warrants? Is there another, is there another way that people in fact could feel safe with the police? They could feel that they could hand themselves into the police perhaps? For example, there's a system in the ACT, a front-up programme. There are, there are, the coroner's court really has a unique position in my submission that they really, really could look at all of these factors that lead to systemic over-incarceration of Aboriginal people.
Well, Mr. Khan has a follow-up on that point.
Is there any legislative model that would allow that wider inquisition that you, you are aware of?
I'm not aware of any current legislative model. I guess it would have to be looked at by yourselves, by Parliament, but my submission would be that you could expand perhaps the cause, that, that definition of cause of death or perhaps manner of death, you could expand that definition to include more broader circumstances perhaps of the death.
Just on that point, I think it was the PIAK submission actually makes the point that in Tasmania, for example, their coroner's legislation provides that a coroner must, wherever appropriate, make recommendations with respect to ways of preventing further deaths and on any other matter the coroner considers appropriate. So, and in particular must report on the care, supervision or treatment of the person. So in that sort of sense, the coroners can do that now, but some, some of the submissions suggest that coroners may be reluctant to do the sort of systems analysis and confine their findings to...
I think we've heard that the, the, what do we call them? The stand-in coroners in country courts particularly are reluctant to...
Yeah, and so we have a situation where, as you say, the findings and the scope of an inquiry are fairly narrowly focused to, you know, matter and cause of, of death, immediate proceeding, rather than the sort of wider systems issues. They, they, they can do that, but they're not required to do that. The Tasmanian provision seems to suggest they're required to do that and, yeah, I don't know whether that applies to other jurisdictions, but would you feel that a strong mandate to coroners to have to report on those sort of systemic issues, if they're appropriate, i- i- if they, if they're at play, would, would also assist families in this situation?
Indeed it would. I imagine it would be a matter of resourcing. We know that the coroners placed in Lyddcombe perhaps have more time than, than Mr. Khan references country magistrates who are fairly limited in the scope.
Well, just on that, we've got 5.2 coroners, maybe we're about to get a, a sixth. And that, and the evidence we've received so far is that 80% of the coronial work that arises in the country is in fact referred back to Lyddcombe, simply because the country magistrates who are coroners also don't have the capacity and the time, so...
It's not necessarily a drafting error in the legislation because the phrase manner and cause doesn't necessarily have a legislative ambit, it's the interpretation that's been taken by coroners and when it's been tested by the Supreme Court on a very narrow view of about cause, is that right?
It is, and we're seeing coroners lately, in the last couple of years, certainly expand that definition. You would have seen certainly the findings in the last couple of years go deeper into certainly what Mr. Sell refers to as the health causes. So we're seeing a lot of focus on the health system in corrective services, justice health system. But broader still, I, I, I think the coroners have capacity and certainly they should have capacity to go further than that.
But I suppose then, could you take on notice whether or not the Victorian formulation would be adequate? But then, and I, and I fundamentally support the direction of your submission, but is there a boundary on it? I mean, where does, should there be a legislative boundary on it or should there just be a broader definition of cause and allow the coroners on a case-by-case basis to work out where the inquiry should cease? For example, chronic overcrowding, you know, systemic poverty into generational trauma, you know, many of these are factors that are relevant to the manner and cause of death of a First Nations person at the hands of police, for example. Is there a boundary, legislative boundary? Or is it just a broader definition and you allow the coroners to police the boundary?
I would take that on notice, but I will say also, I think you could link it into the Royal Commission, to Aboriginal deaths in custody and the recommendations that came out of that.
Well, just on that, Ms. Crellan, I have two or three questions. One of the Royal Commission's deaths in custody recommendations was that within three calendar months of publication of the findings of recommendations of, of the coroner as to any death in custody, agencies were supposed to respond in that period of time. That has not been implemented in New South Wales, but I think it has been implemented by a number of other jurisdictions. Now, whether it's three months or six months, do you think there should be a legislative requirement on relevant agencies and, for that matter, any private sector person or body that might be involved to have to respond to a coronial finding within a specified period of time and for that, those responses, for example, to be reported back to Parliament?
Absolutely. It's, it's so traumatising that a family could go through it, the coroner who is invested and the coroners really work hard and make really important recommendations that they imagine will be followed through. So it's so important that these government departments are held accountable and have to report back to the Parliament and say, yes, I did do this or no, I did not do this, just so families can have some peace of mind to know that if they're going through this process, that actual change will be made.
Further, recommendation 16, I think of the Royal Commission deaths in custody report, suggested that coroners should be empowered to call for further explanations or information considered necessary as a sort of, if you like, a way of following up on any responses or lack of responses to coronial findings. Is that something that you would also, your organisation would also support in, in New South Wales?
I would support it, but I would question how that would work in a court proceedings, given that the matters would be finalised once the findings are handed down. So I wonder how that would work.
Okay. Well, your, your submission talks about the coroner needing to be empowered to call for such further explanations or information as they consider necessary, including reports as to further action taken in relation to the recommendations. That's the kind of jurisdiction there, is it?
It is. I think you would have to ask the coroner to do that before the findings were handed down. So perhaps it's a matter of the coroner indicating to the parties what the recommendations will be and allowing the parties to have an opportunity to respond.
A bit like an Ombudsman's Report.
I, I took this, and you might want to take this on notice, I, I took, as I was reading, recommendation six in your submission, recommendation six C, is that happening very much after the findings had been handed down? Waiting for the response and if there'd been inadequate response enlivening the coroner's jurisdiction afterwards? But you might want to take that on notice.
I'll take that on notice, thank you, Mr. Shubridge.
Look, I've got to say, it strikes me as, picking up on your point, it strikes me as problematic. If you take into account that the coroners are busy now, essentially inviting them some months, many months later...
Could be years.
Yeah, indeed. To be reopening essentially an inquest to re-ventilate matters, I, I would have thought as a matter of practicality, that's not going to fly, is it? It's, it's just...
I very much doubt in the current, with the current resources.
Yeah, well, even with more resources, they're likely to increase the number of hearings as opposed to reinvestigating or re-initiating matters on matters that have already been completed.
I think perhaps what's more important is that when a similar inquest comes before a coroner, that they're able to look back at previous recommendations and, and call on those parties to say, you've been asked to do this previously, has it been done? Because there is that no database that shows what, they're all everywhere, it's very difficult for a coroner to know whether these issues have been considered before unless it's brought to the attention of them by the parties that appear in front of them.
Well, just on that point, in Victoria, our knowledge is limited to paper information at the moment, but the Victorian, the Victorian coroner's unit appears to have that role. That is, they take the data and information from coronial hearings and put it into some kind of accessible...
Database.
Database, so that coroners in the future can draw on that. And I can't remember whether this is the case or it was a suggestion in one of the submissions, that there's a national coronial database that's supposed to do the same, that coroners apparently presently can draw on if they've got similar issues in an inquiry, they can ask that database for a bespoke report about those matters. Whether those things in fact exist, they would be very useful to coroners in New South Wales, wouldn't they?
Absolutely useful. My understanding is the national database is fairly limited in who can access, you need specific access and it's difficult if not all parties can access. I think it, it would help if, for example, in New South Wales, justice health could access to know whether a similar coronial inquiry had occurred in Queensland, to know what kind of programmes they have in that, in their service that could be implemented in New South Wales.
But if, but, I mean, these are most often public decisions, publicly available decisions, publicly available findings. Why shouldn't there just be a publicly available, well-resourced database that draws together findings by, by, you know, by subject matter, by, by agency? And why shouldn't it be just publicly available?
It should be publicly available.
And then there may well need to be an addendum to it because there are some coronial findings that are, have a non-publication order, there may need to be an addendum for the coroners and for those other agencies, but surely just a publicly available, comprehensive, linked database seems to be a minimum.
I would have thought so.
Two, two things, your two case studies, one and two, in your submission speak of five and six-year delays between a death and coronial findings. That's just grotesque, isn't it? Isn't that just a terrible experience for families to have to suffer those sorts of time delays?
It's absolutely horrible. In one of those inquiries, there was a reason for that in that there were criminal charges that were ongoing.
Sure.
In the second one, there's been absolutely no explanation as to the delay. The coroner's apologised as to why, as, as for the delay, but still where the family and, and the ALS who represented the family are still none the wiser as to why it took six years for the findings to be handed down.
So you don't know whether it's the difficulties in, the pressures on the coroner's court in terms of finding hearing dates or whether it's a forensic medicine hold-up?
Not sure.
Has there been an apology? Because surely any family is owed an apology after a six-year delay.
The coroner apologised in her findings.
But without any explanation?
Um, my next question is, recommendation 13 of your submission talks about recognition mentions as an alternative to holding a full inquest. Can you just sort of step us through as to what that entails, what that might look like?
Often, a loved one might die in a police operation that doesn't perhaps strictly fall in that they weren't in custody or there might be some debate about the technicality around whether the deceased was in custody or not. To go through that sort of legal debate, technicality debate in a coroner's court is extremely traumatic. And often what the family would like is some sort of recognition within a courtroom, with a coroner, explaining to them why the, why the matter doesn't fall within the ambit of a full inquest, but that it is a matter that the coroner has looked at, that the brief has been read, to acknowledge that the death happened in a police operation but not strictly falling in with the legal definition in the Coroners Act of a section 23 death. And to allow the family to have that day in court, I guess. The idea of the coroner's court is that it should be a therapeutic model, that it should allow families to be able to, to grieve, to understand. And that, that is why we, we would submit a recognition mention would be beneficial for some parties.
Okay.
On, on the basis of the First Nations inquiry and some of the, if you could describe it as case studies that we saw there, I, I am concerned that even where people have been through the full process, they left, they, they leave entirely disheartened and dissatisfied by the process. I'm not being critical of them in any way, but taking that into account, if a full hearing doesn't bring resolution, how does a short, sharp mention or explanation provide that, that degree, a degree of satisfaction?
I think the difference between a lawyer telling you over the phone, explaining that legal technicality to you, saying the coroner's read the brief, and actually having a day in court where there's a bit of ceremony to it, you can come in, you can sit down, the coroner looks at you and apologises for your loss and there's an acknowledgement of your loved one and that they died in a way that is unusual, could be really beneficial. I'm not saying in all cases.
Is this done elsewhere?
I'm not sure of that, I take that on notice.
Okay, that'd be very interesting. Do committee members have further questions?
I had a question about funding.
Mr. Shubridge?
Um, well, I'm going to ask an open question. Tell us about funding for the ALS for this kind of support work and representation work.
Very recently, the Commonwealth have allocated funding in relation to coronial inquiries and expensive cases funding. At this stage, we're unsure exactly how much that is, still waiting for that to be told. But there is, that has only very recently, obviously we still haven't received that funding, but prior to that, no, we weren't funded in relation to this representation.
So in, in, in most coronial proceedings, the state funding goes to legal aid, is that right?
Yes, legal aid have a coronial inquest unit.
Yep, and that includes representing First Nations families?
Yes, as I understand it. In saying that, we, despite not having allocated funding for this work, we have done it for many years and done it to the best of our ability, yeah.
So that's what I want to ask you about. How much of, what, what sort of resourcing strain has it been on ALS to be doing this work without actually any funding? How much, do you have an idea of what proportion of your budget it is?
I don't have an idea of proportion of budget. It, it's an extremely high workload, especially recently. I mean, there have been five deaths in custody in the last three weeks and we represent four of those families. It's an extremely high, high-capacity workload in that families need a lot of time and we want to give them that time and we also want to give them the time to explore all the issues that, that they have and do it early because this is when the real change can actually be made, is by spending lots of time with them as soon as the person passes away. So yes, it's very resource-intensive and we do need more funding to do it properly.
And do you, I know that primarily your funding comes from federal sources. Have you had any discussions with the state government about providing some of that additional funding? Because of, you know, the coronial process is really a state process. Have you had any discussions with the state government?
I'd have to take that on notice, not, not to my knowledge.
I think you might run into a barrier with legal aid if you're talking about divvying up the, the pie.
Anyway, this is... What I would suggest is additional, we're talking here about additional funding, clearly legal aid are already stretched for their resources. But it's not just, it's not just legal assistance, it's that wraparound support and advocacy that you'd want, is that right?
Yes, we rely very heavily on organisations like Jamburna as well, who provide the wraparound support that we are sometimes not able to. So we do rely very heavily on other community organisations to assist us in that process.
Could you just on notice give us some details about what those additional wraparound services would, would, in a perfect world, look like?
Certainly, yeah.
Any, any final questions? If not, Ms. Crellan, thank you for your evidence. If there's anything further that committee members wish to post, you know, I know you've taken some questions from Mr. Shubridge on notice, we'll write to you about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think the next witness is Mr. Hunyor from PIAK.
Just be back. He's right back.
And I now welcome our next witness from the Public Interest Advocacy Centre. Could you please state your name and your position and the capacity in which you give evidence here today and take either an oath or an affirmation?
Yes, thank you Chair, my name is Jonathan Hunyor, I'm the CEO of the Public Interest Advocacy Centre. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr. Hunyor, we've got the PIAK submission dated 9 July 2021, which is submission number 23, but witnesses have the capacity, if they wish, to give a brief opening statement? Would you like to do so?
Yes, thank you Chair, I will. I won't read through our whole submission, but the committee will see that the thrust of it is that PIAK's view is that there's a need for comprehensive reform to deliver a modern coronial system that meets the needs of our community. This isn't intended as a criticism of the people involved in the system, it's a... This isn't intended as a criticism of the people involved in the system, it's about ensuring that those people have the tools they need and that their work is supported by the structures and systems in which they work. The committee will see our submission highlights five main areas for reform. The first is making good the potential to promote community health and safety. The second is enhancing the potential for the coroner's court to play a therapeutic and restorative role. The third is ensuring robust independent investigations into deaths in custody. The fourth, delivering greater accountability for the implementation of recommendations. And fifth, responding to the first needs of First Nations people. We think there's a compelling case for a specialist standalone coroner's court, but as important as that is ensuring that any such court has the right functions, powers, structure, and resources to do the job of a modern coroner's court. And this means firstly, having a clear legislative mandate for coroners to make appropriate recommendations to address systemic issues connected with a death. And so, for example, we highlight the Tasmanian provision, section 28, which requires a coroner to make recommendations in relation to matters concerning deaths in custody, and particularly the conditions of care. It also means increased and dedicated resources for the coroner's, sorry, for the court's preventive functions, including a coroner's prevention unit. It means a legislative obligation on government to respond to coroner's recommendations. And as importantly, a capacity for monitoring of the implementation by something like a coroner's prevention unit. We think there's significant merit in an independent body to investigate all deaths in custody, including systemic issues, rather than having investigations done by police. And finally, we think there's a need for a fundamental reset of how the justice needs of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people can be better met. And this, of course, needs to be led by First Nations people themselves, and should go beyond, in our view, deaths in custody to include deaths, all deaths in which the state is involved, particularly including deaths in care settings. That was all I wanted to say by way of opening comments. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to give evidence today.
Thank you, Mr. Huniur. Before I pass to committee members, I might ask some opening questions. So you make a submission that we should have a provision here in New South Wales, similar to section 20 of the Tasmanian legislation. That is a strong positive mandate on coroners to address systemic issues.
That's right.
Now, the First Nations deaths in custody inquiry, which committee members here were involved in, made a recommendation to that effect, although I don't think we had in mind that provision. What would be the benefits of such a provision?
Look, it's partly to ensure that that is seen as a central function of the coroner. I think another, a number of the other submissions to this inquiry have highlighted the, sort of, the baggage of history, where the primary functions of the coroner are seen as the sort of who, what, when, where, why questions, with a real focus on sort of medical questions about the causes of death. And the functions around death prevention and systemic recommendations have been seen as ancillary functions. So that's reflected in the way the Act is structured.
So they should become core functions?
That's right. So it's not impossible. There is, as the committee will be aware, there's capacity for coroners to make those sort of recommendations, and they do. But it's considered to be an ancillary set of functions, and it also means that coroners will tend to shy away from more wide-ranging inquiries into some of those systemic issues, because they will often say, well, look, those are really secondary functions, and we, you know, there's often comments made about it not being a Royal Commission, those sort of things, which makes sense within the priorities and the resourcing of inquests and coroner's courts. But we think that's a missed opportunity to look into those things which can better protect the community and prevent death.
Thank you. Another Royal Commission recommendation was for a legislative requirement that government agencies should have to respond to coronial recommendations within a set period of time. I think the recommendation was three months. And in your submission, you say the South Australian ACT, Victorian and Northern Territory legislation have provisions to that effect. And again, what would be the benefit in New South Wales of having such a provision?
Again, it's a matter of giving a clear statement from Parliament as to the importance of responding to recommendations and providing for an accountability mechanism. So it's not just a matter of a response being provided in three months, but a process whereby they're tabled in Parliament, they can be subject to greater scrutiny. But the follow-up from that, from Piak's perspective, is not just an obligation to provide a response, because responses can, for good reasons and bad, be, you know, we agree in principle, we'll look into this. Sometimes that's a stalling tactic, other times it's because it's a complicated issue. So what we really need to see is some mechanism whereby that is actually monitored. And there's a capacity to follow that through, because there's countless recommendations made. And, you know, I've appeared previously in coronial inquests, I, you know, feel embarrassed that I don't know whether a lot of those recommendations were ever followed through, because unfortunately, the next case comes through the door, and that's where I've had to go. So there needs to be some formal mechanism so that the recommendations can actually be tracked and we can get a sense of, well, okay, so you said you would review it, you said you agreed in principle, what happened next and why? Otherwise, the recommendations are only as good as the follow-through.
Now, you also make a recommendation that we should have something like the Victorian Coronial Prevention Unit in place here. Again, what would be the benefit to New South Wales of having such an underpinning for the court?
It means that we've got something that is properly resourced, and so that coroners can pursue systemic issues, because they're resourced to do it. They've got research capacity, they've actually got that standing capacity. So currently, coroners get a lot of that assistance from the parties. Sometimes you can, there can be intervenors or, you know, sort of amicus curio role friends where you've got, once you can demonstrate a sufficient interest, that sometimes parties will appear to make systemic recommendations. But having that capacity within the court just means, again, that we're elevating it from something that's an ancillary function to something that is really considered to be core business.
And that would be of benefit, so in terms of the public tracking the recommendations and what's happened to them, but also to future coronial inquiries, being able to draw on that research and that experience to see what learnings there have been from similar situations?
Absolutely. So I would have, I would have thought that a coroner's prevention unit would be able to assist the court in the immediate inquest, to investigate what systemic issues there may be, and also to assist making solid evidence-based recommendations. And I think this is something that Hugh Dillon picks up in his submission, is actually the need to have that culture that supports that work to be done, because it's not ordinarily, it's not necessarily within the skill set of coroners to be thinking in those systemic terms and making those sort of recommendations, to make sure they're useful, because there's no point making recommendations that are unrealistic or are not going to be usefully implemented.
It'd be a skills base to test those recommendations before they're made as well internally within the coroner's court.
That's right. And to help develop them, and then to have a sense of, also, a bit of corporate knowledge, so what sort of things have been done previously, what's been done elsewhere. You know, a national database of...
Which apparently exists, but it's very limited.
Yes, but to have a sense so that we could say, oh, actually, in, you know, in 2007, the South Australian coroner made a similar recommendation, and actually here's what happened with that. And it wasn't a good idea for this reason, or it was a great idea for that reason. And it's that capacity that doesn't exist and that is a missed opportunity.
I have one final question before I hand over to other committee members, and it's a sort of system design question. We've got 5.2 coroners now, full-time equivalent coroners, soon to be a sixth. Outside of Sydney, Metro, country magistrates fulfil the work of coroners, but the evidence we've received is the bulk of the coronial work is referred back to Sydney. And in a sort of design system, although the coroner's court is part of the local court, effectively the coroner, or the state coroner, is subordinate to the chief magistrate, and the chief magistrate really has sort of control and direction, as far as we can work out on paper at least. Isn't there, given the importance of this jurisdiction, isn't there an argument for a separate coroner's jurisdiction?
I think there is.
Separate twenty court?
I think there is. I think it needs to be recognised that it is a specialist jurisdiction. It isn't a criminal jurisdiction, and it's got really unique features. And if we're going to make the most of its therapeutic capacity and restorative capacity, then I think we need to be looking for ways to recognise that and to support that institutionally. So that's, you know, again, not to criticise the current people in those roles, but to recognise that everyone's doing a job within a framework, and a different framework will better support...
Karen, then we go to Mr. Shubridge.
I think we've ventilated this, I can't remember where, whether it's by discussion. Is it a separate jurisdiction, or is it a separate division rather than, like the children's court? Do you have a...
Piak doesn't have a strong view on which of those would work, but it's a matter of figuring out where we want to be and what's the best structure to get us there.
Functionally distinct.
Functionally distinct.
Functionally distinct.
That's right.
I think this might have been a matter of discussion with Hugh Dillon.
Yes.
Question I actually raised, it was a conflict between Michael Barnes and Hugh Dillon as to what model.
Yeah, and in this context, I'm sort of just reminded, we've got a workers' comp commission which looks after injured workers headed up by a district court judge. We've got NCAP that deals with a whole variety of, you know, important civil matters headed up by a Supreme Court judge. I mean, surely, given the important work of this jurisdiction, it's no less important than freedom of information applications, or whether some professional person should maintain their registration?
Sure, I agree. I don't think we've got a strong view on whether it should be a magistrate, a Supreme Court or District Court.
But it should be autonomous, however that is described.
Well, I think in the Hugh Dillon conversation, part of the issue was, if you completely separate it out, then the issue is, yes, you'll create a professional body of coroners, but the danger is that those coroners will burn out.
And where to go.
And that, what do you do with them then, in a sense? Whereas there is a benefit in being able to move people in and move them out of the magistrate's jurisdiction, from the point of view that if they are burnt out by the
Experience.
Very particular experiences of the coroner's court, it's not, it's not the end for those people. And I think we've seen that in, well, certainly in my time, that you see some coroners, it's been a long, yeah, it's been a long journey. You see some coroners actually not be able to cope with the nature of the justice.
And I simply don't know whether you could achieve that by having people acting in the roles and coming across and being relieved from duties, and having sort of administrative arrangements whereby that can happen, as opposed to actually being part of the one institution.
But equally, we have the other side of the coin, as it were, which I think was ventilated by Professor Dillon, which is, because of the rotational nature of the coroner's jurisdiction, people are really just beginning to develop a facility and expertise and affinity with the jurisdiction before they're rotated back into the local court. And you lose that skill set.
And I think it will depend. Some people may be able to do this sort of work for 10 or 15 years in a healthy and comfortable way and bring great expertise, others after five years will need to move...
It's the same with any court, surely. I mean, any court has a, you know, limited jurisdiction, and some people may be good, bad, or in different parts of the task.
That's right. And I think the subject matter here is, can be particularly distressing, in the same way that some aspects of the criminal law, you know, child sex trials, for example, can be particularly distressing. So I think there's a need to be mindful of the...
The traumatising effects.
Trauma issues, but that is a matter of having that flexibility so that you can accommodate that while recognising that there's some great expertise that you need to build, and that it isn't the role of a regular criminal court. I think that's...
Mr. Shubridge, you had the call?
Sorry. No, no. I think many people would be surprised to realise that it's not currently a function of the New South Wales coroner's system to try and prevent future deaths. I mean, I actually find that quite astounding, that it's not part of the statutory requirement to try and prevent future deaths. You suggest picking up the wording from the Tasmanian coroner's jurisdiction, and I'll just read it onto the record, sub 28-2, which says a coroner must, whenever appropriate, make recommendations with respect to ways of preventing further deaths, and on any other matter that the coroner considers appropriate. Can you give, are you aware of any examples where that's been, you know, particularly useful?
I might have to take that on notice, Mr. Shubridge. I can't off the top of my head now.
I mean, the benefit of that sort of provision is that it directs the coroner's attention to whether there are systemic issues. It's still a matter for the coroner to make the judgement about whether it's useful or appropriate.
But it's front of mind.
It's front of mind.
Front of mind.
But it maintains the independence of the officer...
Yes.
While still directing their attention.
And that works together with the other recommendations that you put forward about having the preventative unit within the coroners. These things work together. It's a package, is that right?
That's right.
But of course, none of that is useful without additional resourcing.
That's absolutely right. Yep.
Yep. So I suppose you've got six separate recommendations, but really, you can't do any one of them by themselves.
No.
There needs to be that package of reforms. Are there any... Well, actually, I suppose I'll hand over for the moment.
Yep. Mr. Roberts, do you have questions? Does any of the committee members on WebEx have any questions? No? Mr. Khan?
No.
Well then, can I just go back to the First Nations recommendation?
Yes.
Do you want to talk us through that, your recommendation about reforming the system so it's culturally safe for First Nations people?
So the first thing I note is, Piak is not a First Nations organisation, so we very much defer to the evidence of First Nations people and organisations. The submissions that were made to the First Nations inquiry were detailed, particularly the submissions of groups like Jambana and the Aboriginal Legal Service. And so those highlight a range of areas where things could be done better and differently. Some of the specific reforms that we've set out in our submission are things like establishing a courier engagement unit within the coroner's court, having a specialist stream within the coronial system to respond to First Nations deaths, opportunities for restorative and therapeutic options such as family conferences with those involved in a death, developing protocols and practice guidelines to guide the conduct of inquests, and I know that the state coroners already taken action there, resourcing wraparound support for families through the coronial process, allowing the idea of recognition proceedings that you heard earlier from Ms. Crelan, to following investigations, and increasing funding for the ALS. So they're the sort of things that we think can make sure this is, the system is done better, but it really, in our view, needs a reset.
And one other element of that is your recommendation five...
Yes.
Involving deaths in custody, and having not police investigate police. Can you, can you talk us through about how that would work within the coronial system?
Sure. I mean, there are a number of different options, and again, excuse me. Piak doesn't have a strong view about whether, about precisely where the body should be located, except that we're strongly of the view that it should be independent from police. A specialist unit within a coroner's court has been suggested as one example there, so that when the investigation can be overseen and undertaken by an investigatory team with special skills within the coroner's court, so that the police aren't the ones who are preparing the brief, or interviewing witnesses and so on. And that's just essential for independence.
Raise a matter of it. What's concerned me in this whole area is that we talk about police not investigating police, and I accept the problem, but the majority of deaths in custody are not occurring in police custody. The overwhelming majority are in corrective services.
Yes.
So are we saying that in the context of a corrective services death, it's inappropriate for the police to be involved in the investigation?
It doesn't raise the same, exactly the same issues, but it raises similar issues because it's all part of the criminal justice system. It's still people in uniform, that's still how it's presented, those systems work closely together. So I think from the perspective of improving the confidence of First Nations people in the system, and maintaining that sense of independence and integrity, then I think police should also not be involved in investigations into deaths in prisons, also because the issues may flow over. So it may be that there are issues that cross over between what happened during the course of the police interactions and what then happened. and what then happens in the cells.
Well, I think the statistics that we gained on the First Nations inquiry is that the rate of death of First Nations people in custody is
Consistent with their level of overrepresentation.
Consistent with their level of overrepresentation.
Yes.
So what I'm then left with is the question, does that mean that all deaths in custody of any sort, particularly in corrective services, should not involve police? Even though there's no evidence of, in a sense, statistical overrepresentation when viewed as part of the prison cohort?
That's our view, that they should be done separately. Obviously, it's still, you know, in one sense, it's still the state investigating, but the idea of an independent coroner's court and a specialist unit within that that investigates with a, you know, an improved mandate around accountability and death prevention and those sorts of things. I think that can be seen much more clearly to provide a more rigorous and independent investigation that the public and particularly First Nations people can have greater confidence in.
But I don't think it's no involvement of the police. It's just not the police being the primary investigation unit. I don't think anyone has ever said there should be no role from the police. And I don't think that's your position.
No, that's not.
Well, that's what was being said before, David.
While I'm asking PIAK.
Yes, and I'm sorry, if I was not clear, police are going to have to be involved because there may have to be criminal charges and so on. So it's, it's, yes.
The primary responsibility line with an independent unit.
That's right. That's right.
All right.
Where would the people be drawn from?
Oh, there are a range of places that people could be drawn from. And some people may have experienced themselves in law enforcement, but there are a range of other investigatory bodies where people may have that experience across, you know, there are corporate regulators and there are ombudsmen and there are human rights commissions that do investigations into things. So there are a range of different things. It'll be a matter of identifying what skills you need for that position.
Homicide investigation, I'd suggest. Fairly difficult to recruit them from anywhere outside a law enforcement body, though.
Whatever their background is.
Corporate regulators, I agree, corporate regulators do do investigations, there's no disputing that. But we're talking about a fairly unique skill set when we're talking about the investigation of a homicide.
Yes, I accept that.
Okay, are there any further or additional questions for this witness from committee members? If not, Mr Hunor, thank you very much for your, for the submission from PIAK and your evidence here today. If there's anything further from committee members, it'll be forthcoming.
Thank you.
In terms of questions on notice. Thank you very much. To the afternoon session of the inquiry. And the witnesses are Mr Ian Brown, Mr Dave Darlington, Mr Jeff Luskam, all from the Independent Bushfire Group. Starting with you, Mr Brown, would you like to give your full name, the capacity in which you give evidence today and swear an oath or an affirmation from one of the guards in front of you?
Yes, I'm Ian Douglas Brown, Secretary of the Independent Bushfire Group. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr Darlington, would you state your full name, the capacity in which you give evidence and swear either an oath or an affirmation, hopefully from the form of words that have been provided to you?
Good afternoon, I'm David George Darlington. I'm a committee member of the Independent Bushfire Group. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Darlington. Mr Luskam, would you like to do likewise?
My name is Geoffrey Bruce Luskam. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And I'm here representing the Independent Bushfire Group, which I can be.
Thank you. Now, we have the submission made by the Independent Bushfire Group, that is submission number 37, but would one of you like to give a short opening statement?
Yes, you would, thank you, I'll do that.
Okay, Mr Brown, floor is yours.
Chair, deputy chair and committee members, thank you for inviting us to appear today. Our submission is the only one that focuses on bushfires, yet they can be a large part of the coronial workload, as shown by the still ongoing inquiry into the Black Summer fires. This workload is likely to increase with the worsening fires under climate change. We formed the Independent Bushfire Group after Black Summer to advocate for better fire management. Our group is a voluntary collaboration of experienced bushfire practitioners with diverse backgrounds. There's no other group like us really, with the depth of on-ground experience, independent of any funding, government agency or political stripe, and with a focus on practical firefighting, science and evidence. We've worked hard on our advocacy and we have been influential. We started with a 180-page report to the New South Wales Independent Bushfire Inquiry, including analysis of some Black Summer fires. These are still the only such studies that have been published. We've made other submissions and liaised with fire agencies, media, firefighters, researchers, politicians and community groups. Better review processes are critical to better outcomes, so one reform we have argued for is an Inspector General of Emergency Management. We are now into the second fire season after our worst bushfires in 200 years, yet there is still no comprehensive review of bushfire operations. The New South Wales Bushfire Inquiry requested in-house reviews of just four high-profile fires, which have been kept secret in difference to the subsequent coronial. That coronial looks like producing nothing definitive until at least three fire seasons have gone. Current mechanisms for bushfire review are helpful but flawed. They do not deliver timely and robust lessons for improving things on the ground. For the sake of firefighters and communities, we need a more effective system. It would embody a number of features. It would be blame-free, non-adversarial and fact-based. It would be independent, it would be resourced, it would look at successful as well as adverse events. It would develop expertise in bushfire operations as well as fire science and investigations. It would have powers to compel information. It would face fewer legal impediments, would focus on lessons learned to improve bushfire operations. It would develop accountable action plans to deliver on those lessons and it would produce outcomes before the following fire season. Bushfire coronials can produce good outcomes but fall short of what is needed. They can also get in the way of best practice and are slow to deliver. Coronial and other processes are poorly integrated. I should say that our group has personal experience of many bushfire investigations and coronials. My two colleagues here on the screen have appeared as witnesses at coronial hearings, having been in charge of emergency level fires. We strongly agree that the many submissions that argue for a greater focus on timeliness, prevention and accountability. We also urge this inquiry to recommend that non-fatal bushfire investigations be given to a new, purpose-built body, an Inspector General of Emergency Management, as in other states, and with the features already mentioned. Separating bushfire would also reduce coronial workload and assist timeliness. Bushfires have enormous impacts on lives, trauma, community, property, environment and treasury. The Black Summer operations probably cost more than $1 billion. More rigorous, inbuilt, timely and transparent processes to improve bushfire outcomes are possible. We suggest they are essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Roberts, do you have some questions?
You don't mind, Chair?
I certainly do not mind.
I'll open the batting on this one, if you don't mind. I'll direct the question to you, Mr Brown, simply because you're here in the room, but Mr Darlington or Mr Luskam, if you feel it's more appropriate that you answer, feel free to participate. Having read your submission, I think there are a number of points, and they're all salient points, but I think the key thing that I take away is the delay in the coronial process and the protracted nature of it, and therefore the opportunity to not, well, the opportunities lost to learn from lessons and it's because of the fire season normally, and I mean, hopefully, touch wood, this season isn't one because of all the wet. But normally it goes on. But because the coronial process might take two, three, sometimes up to five years to complete, we're losing the opportunity of learnings. Is that a good summation?
That is a very key point, the timeliness of, I mean, we don't lose the opportunity completely, but obviously it is delayed. And for instance, Dave might add to this because we were just talking about it yesterday. Some outcomes from the Sir Ivan Dowdery Coronial, which was the last major coronial on a bushfire, which you might mention. The other issue is that coronials tend to be, I mean, they're pretty intimidating. They're very legalistic and there's barristers and cross-examination and sworn statements and all that sort of thing, which, and there's a whole lot of issues around liability and blame and that sort of thing, which people who are trying to review fires face if the coronial is the ultimate arbiter. So there's some other issues as well, but timeliness is certainly critical, yes. Dave, do you want to add about the Sir Ivan fire, as we call it?
Yes, so thank you for that question. It certainly is very, very, very relevant. I'll just direct the committee to our first page in our first section that makes reference to that Sir Ivan fire. Look, it's not country I'm personally familiar with, but having read the coronial inquiry report and findings, it was fairly clear that that fire was one of the first to experience fire behaviour under catastrophic conditions. That's the top of the fire range. And it's one of those absolute dreadful days. And we experienced many, many of those during the 1920s bushfire period. So I would imagine the findings from that in a more timely way could have helped feed into better preparedness, I guess, and better understanding of fire control for the 1920s fire events. And another key finding for improved communication between farming, the farming community and fire drivers and indeed how to integrate the fire, the firefighting resources that farmers often have into the fleet of fire agency suppression equipment. So that's just two examples, no doubt there was others, but had that been coming up before the commencement of the 1920s bushfire season, perhaps, perhaps there may have been opportunities for greater adoption of those findings.
I would say those things are, some of those things are being addressed now, but it's after the 1925s, not before them, unfortunately.
Can I also, sorry, can I, I mean, Jeff Luskam here. There's a couple of other important differences as well. The fire event in itself, particularly in bushfire, can take days, weeks, months to unfold. And understanding what requires a forensic investigatory process undertaken by people who understand fire, you know, with the relevant understanding of fire and it's investigatory skills that the police are quite often not able to, you know, break the barrier to assist the coroner. And so I think the nature of the investigation is quite different in a bushfire setting compared to the majority of the work that's undertaken by the coroner.
Thank you, Mr Luskam. Mr Khan, do you have questions?
Yeah, can I start by?
Oh, and Penny.
No, Penny can go.
Okay. Ms Sharp, you have the call.
Oh, thank you, I wasn't trying to budge you.
No, no, no.
I was stopping the line. Thank you very much for coming along and I think that your submission really added a different flavour to what we're looking at within the inquiry, so I just really want to thank you. I did, I mean, I noticed your advocacy for an independent Inspector General of Emergency Management. I see quite a lot of merit in that idea. I suppose my question to you is really, how do you see that operating with the coroner? Or is this really a separate process that would, you know, is more directly to deal with, what went well, what went badly, what do we immediately need to change? Is there an exercise in understanding how you see that being with this of the coronial process?
Well, ideally, I think it would feed into the coronial process as a input, rather than the coroner having to send out police and everybody to do a sort of very analytical sort of forensic type, legalistic approach. What we're looking for is a much faster capacity, I suppose, to review fires soon after the event, rather than waiting a couple of years. So, I mean, we're not experts in coronial processes, we're not lawyers, but what we can do is point out what we would like to see as an outcome or the shape of what we would like to see. And I think that's the way we see it, that the process of Inspector General would go straight in there after the fire and talk to people and that sort of thing. Perhaps not in a different sort of style, in a more sort of informal style. I mean, anyone that's been involved in a major fire and knows what was, what happened, and there's not that many people for most fires actually, but can probably tell you what the key issues were and so on, without going through months and months of interviewing sort of witnesses and that sort of thing as a police-type process would do. So it would follow more informal processes and get to some sort of outcomes first. And the other issue is, obviously, if there's deaths, the coroner has to be involved. But it's not entirely clear what the, to me anyway, why the coroner does investigate other fires. Because as Jeff said, they're quite different in process to single events like murders and deaths and that sort of thing. Any other guys want, Jeff or Dave, do you want to comment on that?
If I can just follow up there.
Yeah, sure.
I suppose that there's two things for me that arise out of that. I mean, one is, and this is, forgive me, I've not been involved in fighting fires. And I really would like to understand the process after the fire happens and the actual debriefing that goes on. I mean, my understanding being that, you know, you are a guest or whoever else, there is some sort of debriefing process and then there's a review of what's gone on. I'm just trying to understand how that is separate, letting aside sort of deaths, which is a difference too. Just a general comment. I suppose the question I'm coming to is that is the coronial jurisdiction the right place?
Well, no, we don't think it is necessarily. And part, I mean, the coronial at least is independent and strongly independent. That's a very strong plus for the coronial process. And so ought an Inspector General of Emergency Management be. However, internal reviews by agencies and so on are inherently challenging. Let's be honest, when fires are very traumatic, challenging events, people often just want to move on. They don't want to rehash it and all. So if it's left to the agencies and so on, it is a real challenge to do that thoroughly and well. And things are improving in that front. Dave might like to comment on this, he's been involved in some recently. And after-action reviews and so on are happening. The key agency has just recently adopted a lessons management framework, which people have been lobbying for for many years. However, it still seems to be being applied somewhat inconsistently. And as yet, there's no statewide statement on the lessons that came out of the Black Summer fires, apart from the Independent New South Wales Inquiry, which only went so far, really. And that's probably because they're deferring to the coronial process. That's a key issue. There's, internal reviews are beset with issues of liability and blame and that sort of thing, which really need to be got away from if we're going to get good outcomes promptly.
Yeah, it's important to note too that something like the New South Wales Inquiry was not an operational review. And in fact, the inquiry, I think their words were something like, this is only the beginning, or should only be the beginning. So they weren't able to look at the operational aspects to review those things to understand what worked well and what didn't.
All right.
There's a significant gap is, I guess, where we're coming from.
Ms Sharp, you had some further questions?
Where does the operational review occur or does it not occur? I mean, I'm just wondering, what is the role of resilience in New South Wales?
Very good question. What is the role of resilience?
That is a really good question. That's, I've been trying to get my head around the role of resilience in New South Wales. So that's possibly one that this committee could find some value in seeking some clarification around that, their role, obviously a new agency. But I suspect there is some real value actually in sitting down with the resilience commissioner, given his enormous background in respect in fire management and having that discussion. And I think that's a really good point to raise. And the other answer to your question, who's in charge of operational reviews? Look, they always occur. The lead agency for fires, if it's been a Section 44 fire event, it will obviously be the Rural Fire Service. If it's a fire of lesser scale, it will be the Land Management Agency, Forest Corporation or Parks and Wildlife. Or indeed Fire and Rescue, that would be managing that debriefing process. But the debriefs are very kind of challenging and, from my experience, you've got to have really good skills to get the best out of the debrief, because it's a real balance between people feeling that they're under the spotlight, because perhaps a decision they made could have been, in hindsight, would have been better not to have made that. But, look, firefighting is, is like that, it's not a precise science. Sometimes you've got to make a decision and you say, gosh, I wish we hadn't have done that. But equally, sometimes a really challenging decision can be implemented with the right people. And a lot of lessons can be learned from that, as to why that worked this time and why a similar operation, you know, two years ago didn't, didn't work. But it's important to have those discussions and make those learnings.
Ms Sharp, do you have follow up questions?
I'll come back, that's fine.
Okay, Mr Khan?
Yeah, look, I have to say some of, and I'll direct this to Mr Brown, but only on the basis again that you're here. Some of the matters you put are very persuasive, I think. And indeed, the overall question about why coroners investigate fires is equally on point. So I suppose I'll ask in that regard, would you foresee the, we call it the inspector general of emergency management having a power to investigate all fires, or?
I think fatal fires will have to remain with the coroner, or?
Well, fatalities would remain with the coroner, I think we'll take that as a?
Yes, yes, yes. My working assumption that why other fires are in the coroner's thing is because they may involve people in terms of arson and other human causes, because the key role of the coroner is to investigate the cause and origin of fires. However, when it comes to fires, they're fairly obviously not arson. And there's a lot of, last, that bad season, most of the major fires weren't arson, they were lightning strikes. So.
There are certainly occasions where it's unclear as to whether it's arson, whether it's, whether it's a lightning strike, whether it's power lines, and indeed, maybe a combination of all three.
Yes, there are. Well, within government agencies, particularly the Rural Fire Service, there is a process of investigating bushfires and the cause of them. And then the, when a coronial occurs, the police come in and do it again, basically. But they often rely on the RFS investigation as well, from what I've observed of the recent coronial process. So, look, I agree, there is a demarcation issue there. I don't know if I can suggest a precise answer, it depends on what the?
But also, it's important to note, it's not just the origin of the fire, it's the events during the fire suppression operation, which can be days, weeks, months to unfold, that's.
Yes, that's right.
It's not limited to the actual point of ignition. The investigation needs to look at all the intervening points.
Yes, and any one of those points can, I mean, if an impact happens, all the events leading up to that may be relevant in terms of managing, in terms of controlling what the fire did or didn't do. So in the case of, I've lost my train of thought there.
Happens to me all the time.
Well, could I ask this question then? What would an independent inspector general of emergency management, as it's understood in Queensland and Victoria, what function would it do that's not currently being fulfilled by Resilience New South Wales or any other agency? Leaving aside, of course, the notion that it would be independent, I think we can all agree independence is a, is a great virtue with inquiries, whereas Resilience New South Wales is a budget sector agency or super agency.
Yes, I would say that.
How does it work in Queensland and Victoria?
Coordination agency.
Oh, I'll take that point.
It's not actually, in a sense, a cost centre in itself.
No, no, but it coordinates the activities of others, including the RFS and the SES.
Yes, well, as far as I'm aware, the, the role of independent investigation is not part of the Resilience New South Wales's role. I might be mistaken on that, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. And, and yes, you took the word out of my mouth, independence is key. I mean, I think when you look at, look across the other jurisdictions and governance, the police have an independent, have independent oversight, the army has, the military has independent oversight, even our spies have independent oversight, but our fire agencies don't in New South Wales. And I wouldn't say necessarily the Queensland and Victorian models are ideal. There has been some independent reviews done recently of fires in those states and in South Australia, and we felt they weren't, they're okay, but they weren't fantastic. Again, they didn't really delve into the operational detail very much, they stuck with higher level stuff.
So what are you proposing? How would it look like if we were to recommend it here in New South Wales?
Well, I think I mentioned the points that I mentioned in my introductory talk, that it'd be critical to develop expertise in investigation of fires. Well, something I should say is that one of the, one of the problems at the moment with the standard sort of debriefs and after action reviews and other things, is they don't start from a point of common understanding of what even happened. We're very strong on the idea that there should be analysis of fires and then you do the debrief. Analysis of what, exactly what happened in terms of a time and time and event process. And the inspector general would perform that as well, and either by commissioning expertise or using, developing in-house expertise.
So if the inspector were to have an investigatory function, would you see that being assisted by powers of compulsion with regards to the production of documents or answering questions? In many ways, similar powers to what a coroner has got?
Well, that would be ideal, yes. However, I think it's important that it maintain a, like, an informal sort of focus with a key objective of getting to the, getting to the truth, rather than sort of trying to look for someone to blame, and making it a very adversarial sort of situation where they have to demand documents and that sort of thing. Ideally, it would be a far more, yeah, a less legalistic process.
Indeed, but you, the question is obtaining the cooperation of the parties, and you're not even, I think we see in government, you don't necessarily get cooperation from different government departments at various times in terms of undertaking reviews.
Government departments, part of their role is to protect themselves and the government, which would not be the role of an independent arbiter.
Indeed, that's why you want that independent status.
Yes, yes.
All right. Any further questions from any member, Ms Cusack?
All quiet on the Western Front.
All right. Okay, that was a no, Ms Cusack?
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I can hear you now. All right, well, if there's, if there's no further questions from any committee members, I thank Mr Brown and the other two gentlemen, Mr Luskum, Mr Dallington, for giving evidence today, you've given us a lot to think about. You're excused.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and if you'd like to come back to us on anything, please do. Thank you. Ms Mullen?
Oh, Tim, Timothy.
Oh, starting with you, sir. State your full name and the capacity in which you give evidence today, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, and then we'll just go across the room.
Timothy John Bowen, giving evidence on behalf of MIJ organisation. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr Bowen. Dr MacMullen?
I don't think that's staying on, there we go. Dr Danielle MacMullen here from AMA New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Dr Ellis?
Yes, Dr Andrew Ellis, Royal Australian and New Zealand College of Psychiatrists. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Dr Matthews?
Dr Christina Matthews, and I'm here in a professional capacity today representing the Royal Australian and New Zealand College of Psychiatrists, which I may just refer to as the college in this session. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. All right. So would each organisation present like to give a brief opening statement? We've got your submissions, but there's a capacity to giving an opening statement, should you wish. Mr Bowen?
Thank you, Chair. And on behalf of MIJ, I thank the committee for the invitation to give evidence today. Our focus is on coronial matters involving healthcare, where we support and educate doctors and organisations. I held MIJ's advocacy and policy work, and in a past life represented doctors and organisations in coronial matters. Our interest is in seeing how the handling of healthcare matters can be improved and made more efficient, particularly through resuming past productive engagement between the coroner's court and healthcare stakeholders, and making a number of important modifications to the current legislative framework. We think the proposals and recommendations in our submission are appropriately directed to improving evidence gathering and processes for other preparatory work, clarifying when inquests should be held and how they should run, and modernising coronial processes. In our view, these steps could go a long way to reducing the delays and avoiding some of the challenges we see in coronial matters. A standalone coroner's court also deserves careful consideration. We are conscious of the funding and other practical challenges that this could involve, but there may be other ways to try and achieve at least some of the benefits that could offer. And finally, thank you again for the opportunity to appear today.
Thank you. Dr MacMullen?
Thanks. AMA New South Wales thanks you for the opportunity to appear before this inquiry into the coronial jurisdiction in New South Wales. As the peak representative for medical practitioners in New South Wales, the AMA submission focuses upon the coronial jurisdiction from the perspective of the medical profession, and addresses those areas of the coronial jurisdiction where the processes and procedures may be improved from that viewpoint. We've also given due consideration to those members of the public who find themselves involved in the coronial system. We firstly wish to express our appreciation for the work of the Coroners' Court of New South Wales, and cognizant of the fact that the coroner works tirelessly to improve systems and processes in New South Wales with the ultimate aim of protecting the community. In our submission, we focused on key aspects of the reporting process following adverse events, predominantly in the public hospital system, and have relied upon anecdotal evidence and feedback from our hospital practice committee members, AMA New South Wales members, and members of the New South Wales Public Hospital Medical Staff Councils. A number of key recommendations are made, summarised as firstly addressing delays. We believe that delays in the coronial jurisdiction are a core issue which must be addressed to better deliver, to better the delivery of healthcare to the public and decrease emotional distress to families involved. One area where that delay exists is due to the duplication of investigation and recommendations by the coroner and the health service, also causing potential unnecessary use of coroner's resources. To address this, serious adverse events or RCA reports or recommendations could be routinely released to coroners. Secondly, removing, efforts should be made to allow increased involvement, inclusion of relevant clinicians into coronial recommendations, and a new model of practice could be developed which allows for practitioners to be directly involved in implementing the recommendations that a coroner recommends. This will ensure best practice and provide a system of improvement rather than disruption. And lastly, AMA New South Wales believes that coronial recommendations should not be made without reference to the costs and resources associated with implementing those changes. At the same time, we of course do not want to detract from the importance of change and improvement in this jurisdiction, which is required for the protection and prevention of harm to the public at large. Thanks again.
Thank you. College?
Thank you, I might just read out a brief statement, and thank you, Honourable Mr Chair and other honourable members. Dr Ellis and I wish to thank you, the select committee, for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the college on this land that belongs to the Gadigal people. The college is concerned with promoting and advocating for an optimal level of mental wellbeing for all members of the community. Given this, we have a professional interest in various aspects of the coronial jurisdiction. There's the unfortunate reality that the coroner's court regularly hears cases that involve the death of a person with a mental illness, who may have been suffering psychological stress, or perhaps died unexpectedly in a place of lawful detainment. These are the people we as psychiatrists assess, manage and support on a daily basis. The college is also aware of the mental health needs of the bereaved and community witnesses who encounter the coronial process. The tragic events which may result in an inquest being held, or indeed the inquest itself, unsurprisingly have a significant adverse effect on the mental health of those personally connected to the deceased. With consideration of this, we hope to highlight a need for adequate resourcing for social and mental health services for the bereaved. It is particularly imperative that culturally appropriate support be available to First Nations people and others from culturally diverse backgrounds. Funding should also be allocated to appoint expert psychiatry witnesses in cases that involve the death of a person with a mental illness. Evidence from such clinicians can prove useful to the inquest, and there have been clear examples in the past where such assistance has not been sought. With awareness of the complexity of the coronial process, we still wish to highlight the need for timeliness in the coroner's handing down of decisions and recommendations. A prolonged time period between this and the inquest, or indeed the tragic event itself, can lead to increased psychological stress for those connected to the case, as well as potentially missed opportunities for relevant agencies to move forward towards assistance change and improvement. Our written submission also considers other mechanisms to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the coronial process, and we would be happy to speak further to this if the select committee desires. Thanks for your time.
Well, thank you for those opening statements. Committee members, who would like to open the batting for questions?
I'll start.
Mr Khan?
Might start with Mr Bowen. I'm referring to page two of your submission, and particularly the proposed changes to the Coroners Act. Can you flesh out the issue of where you say there is not presently procedural fairness shown to participants who may be adversely impacted?
In a healthcare inquest perspective, my own personal experience and the experience of my colleagues and our members has generally been quite a good one. Our question, issue around that is more that we see as a deficiency in the act, that there's not a reinforcement of the need for that. Now, certainly, we'd be comfortable with how it's being dealt with at the moment, but it is important to have that, we'd say, in the act to guide future practice and put it within the DNA of the coronial jurisdiction, which at the moment is dependent on how individual coroners do that.
Can you point to two particular areas where you have a concern, even if you say it's not a demonstrated problem at the present time?
Not, I wouldn't say that doctors particularly are being denied important aspects of procedural fairness, but there's opportunities to respond to certain things in certain ways, that if perhaps we put procedural fairness front and centre, that may assist with those things. For instance, if something is in the mind of a coroner to make a certain recommendation, or perhaps refer a matter for consideration by the Healthcare Complaints Commission, perhaps emphasis on procedural fairness, so to say, that should be put forward at the very beginning, not necessarily raised further down the track.
At the very beginning? How would a coroner know at the very beginning? Before you've started contemplating the evidence, heard some cross examination, how could you possibly know at the very beginning?
Indeed, it might be suggested if, if that's being flagged up front, the allegation will be being made that the coroner has come to a preconceived position.
I'd accept that.
How can you know at the very beginning? How can you know at the very beginning?
Well, just, just one person speaking at a time, please. Mr. Shubridge, I think you were actually speaking at the time, and then back to Mr. Khan.
I wouldn't say Mr. Shubridge would be at the beginning in every case. I'd suggest that it could be on the cards in certain cases, that there may be particularly, probably more in the sense of making recommendations to certain organisations, that it would be an opportunity to give those organisations a chance to think, well, what have we already done, and what else could we do, and explain that to the coroner in the early stage.
Just, just, sorry, Mr. Shubridge, but just to follow up. So if you're talking about, you know, a particular incident, let's say, that leads to a death, and you're talking about the people, you know, you're hearing from the people directly involved, that there may be bodies or stakeholders who expertise or experience may bear on those events, but they may not have been directly involved? Is that what you're talking about?
That, that's right, exact, Mr. Chair. Personal experience has been sometimes those organisations may be involved later. It may be particular bodies within New South Wales Health, or colleges like the Royal Australian College of Psychiatrists, or particularly College of GPs as well. An earlier opportunity to comment on things, which, look, it may not be a legal definition of procedural fairness, but where people's interests are affected in that area, organisations' interests are affected, getting the opportunity to respond early to that. And my submission would be, I guess that improves the quality of the recommendations of the coroner.
You're really talking about his people's professional interests more broadly being impacted by perhaps coroner's recommendations, but their representative bodies not having the opportunity to comment on that particular matter?
Yes, that would be fair.
Thank you, Mr. Shubridge, sorry for interrupting.
But it's an inquisitorial process. It doesn't commence by pleadings or statements of parties' position. It starts with an open slate largely. You know, obviously there's discussions between the council assisting and the coroner, but that, what you're suggesting seems to me entirely contrary to the very idea of an inquisitorial process. You basically start with a statement of issues and work your way back, which, that's not how I understand it works, and I'd need to be persuaded that that would be a good path to go down.
In, in a range of healthcare inquests already, and I understand it's more the general practice, is that a list of issues will be produced? It may be just before an inquest, or it may be at an earlier stage of an inquest, and that can be quite a helpful mechanism. Now, that's not necessarily consistent, and that might be because of the issues you've raised around, it's not able to identify issues necessarily early, nature of the inquisitive process, but the issues can, in some situations, be identified earlier, and in my respectful submission, without detracting necessarily from the quality of that inquisitorial process.
I mean, if you've got a disciplinary process, where you've got a, an authority challenging the registration of a, of a professional, well then you can see how at the beginning the allegations and the exchange would happen. But coronials aren't disciplinary processes. They're trying to get to the, to the, to the truth of a matter, and hopefully starting without a preconception about where it will end. Do you, do you say that the processes involved in disciplinary processes can just be translated into coronials? Because I have trouble, for the reasons I've said, accepting that.
Not directly, because there are, there is a clear recognition that, of that different process, oh, different aim, as you've identified already, but there can be a very fine line at times between not getting to issues of civil liability or disciplinary criticism, and expressing views on what shouldn't have happened, and what can be done better. It is a difficult line for coroners to walk, and I do think coroners can do it quite well at times, but that fine line means that it would only be fair and proper in certain circumstances to give the opportunity to respond. And I'm not saying that that isn't given at times, but I think it would be helpful that that is recognised in the act.
Can I just move on to another part?
Yeah, of course, Mr.
Well, can I just, just one, I have one other question.
Well, I thought I was starting by going through some of the sections on page two of his report dealing with changes to the Coroners Act.
I'll give the call to Mr. Khan.
I don't want to use all the time we've got.
No.
Can I just go to the section 61 point, that is, the use of certificates? Can you flesh out for us where you say the deficiency is? Are you saying that it is too difficult to get those certificates at the present time?
Not difficult to get the certificates once we reach the inquest stage, but enormous number of matters being looked at and dealt with on the papers, so to speak. Now, that protection, unless certain processes can be invoked, there's a debate about whether they could be, doesn't apply at that early investigatory stage. So what we're proposing is that the coroner's ability to grant that certificate or protection be extended to that earlier stage.
Doesn't seem unreasonable in terms of moving the matter along in some way. All right, well, I'll cede the floor at this stage, there's other matters, but I'll...
Before I go back to Mr. Shubridge, does any other committee member have questions?
Is it Catherine? Oh, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll give the call to Penny Sharp first, and then to Ms. Cusack, and then back to Mr. Shubridge.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Dr. McMullin a question about the root cause analysis. I wanted to understand, I mean, I'm actually familiar with the root cause analysis issue, and my understanding of it is that, you know, it's supposed to, you know, go through in detail, it's not a blame exercise, but actually, you know, get to the bottom of what an issue is and deal with the systemic issues that are there. I am, I'm really just wanting to understand how that could be of use in terms of a coronial inquiry. I mean, I am surprised that that doesn't, that's not sort of an automatic thing that is part of the process. Could you just take me through that? And I'm interested in the interaction, and I suppose if that's the point that Mr. Shubridge was making before, just the sort of the inquisitorial part of this, and looking at it with fresh eyes, how that all comes together in your view?
Yes, certainly, and thanks for the question. And our main point around this is around duplication of resources, outcomes, and, and the delays to the system. So it is standard, common practice in the public hospital system, and increasingly in private hospitals, and across the private sector, particularly in larger corporate general practices even, that if there is a serious adverse event, that a process of investigation is undertaken locally to, to investigate that event and to implement systemic change to prevent a similar event from occurring in future. New South Wales Health has recently, it's my understanding, undertaken a bit of a review of exactly how that is done in the public hospital system between the time of when our submission went in, but further information, if that was required, could be obtained from New South Wales Health. Often, we're found, we find that the outcomes and the recommendations made by the coroner either mirror or very closely align with those that have already been made at the local level, and have in fact often already been implemented. And where we see improvements could be made is in the information sharing between stakeholders, such as the public hospital system and the, and the coroner's jurisdiction, recognising, and we would suggest that, yes, the coronial system should remain a fresh set of eyes, open, you know, without a preconceived idea of the outcome, but that at a certain point in their investigation, it may be, there could be improvements made in terms of the information sharing ability, so that the coroner could gather information from other investigations that have already been made, and be allowed to either have access to the outcomes or to the full inquiry, both to sort of streamline their resource use, but also minimise duplication of outcomes and delays to families when improvements have already been made and implemented through local investigations.
Can I just, is there a danger, I just don't know, but I mean, is there a danger that the, I mean, the root cause analysis, because there's sort of system focus, not apportioning blame to individuals, that if that was too swept up in, the coronial outcome would, could influence the way which people participate in the root cause analysis? Is that, is that a certain issue that we have to, that needs to be thought about?
It's my understanding that in a, if there's been a serious adverse event that obviously has an individual issue, that that is dealt with separately, it's not to say that that is never dealt with, but there are different pathways with which you undertake that disciplinary sort of action if there is an individual where it's needed, but that the purpose of the root cause analysis should be to improve the system and prevent similar occurrences in future. The same should be then said for the coroner's court, that again, if there's an obvious error that has been made, or an obvious, a portion of blame to be put to an individual or to a service, that we're not saying that that shouldn't happen, it's just that in a significant chunk of cases, there is overlap in the recommendations made, and that there's duplication there. And of course, there would, you know, you'd have to work out the details of making sure that there was still independent oversight of the coroner, and that they weren't routinely just, as you say, trusting a local resource if other investigation needed to happen, but that in a significant number of cases, it would be appropriate to share information.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Ms. Cusack?
Thank you. I think I'd like to get to a similar to Penny Sharp. Taking a hospital, when it's an adverse thing, it does trigger multiple inquiries which address different aspects, like, so for example, the hospital itself needs, I think, for example, if the wrong bottle has been attached to the oxygen port, you don't want to wait for a coronial inquiry to press that. Like, everybody is very understanding of why the hospital should do that. But there's also the healthcare compliance mission, there's the health department itself, like, I've seen what the hospital is doing, and there's the coroner's place. Can I just get a sense of where all of this is together, and whether the multiple inquiries that are triggered are getting covered in some way? And then, another question that I want to ask, is, once the coroner makes recommendations, how are they communicated and committed? And I asked that question because I remember the, the, of the virus, or children, there were coroner's recommendations, and they doubt how those had been dealt with back in the emergency, and they could seem to be taken up by all of the hospitals. And we had another repetition that said, say, this happened here in the hospitals, and so I'm really trying to understand what is the force and effectiveness of facilitating those recommendations. So there are two parts to my question. Thank you.
Don't know if you want me to answer first, and then others may have others to say. I think the first part of your question about the multiple layers of investigation speaks to the point we were talking about before, of that there are often multiple lines of inquiry after an adverse event, and that is, that may be appropriate in the circumstances, but it should, we would think that it should be easier to share information where appropriate, that often there are very separate lines of inquiry, but it would often be appropriate to be able to share resources. In terms of implementation, speaks to our, the other point in our submission around the coroner's jurisdiction having an eye to implementation and resourcing of that. It's my understanding that implementation of coroner's recommendations is not mandated. We're not saying, you know, we haven't formed a view on whether it should be, but that the, the resourcing required at times to implement recommendations can be significant, either in terms of equipment required, IT changes, changes to workflow in terms of communication between other clinical jurisdictions, or for example, between the hospital service, ambulance, and primary care. Getting those three to talk to each other would be ideal, but is actually quite difficult to implement. And that we, so our suggestions for that were to allow greater input by practicing clinicians at the time of forming recommendations to, at least to inform how implementable recommendations will be, on how, how real world they are, and then perhaps thought could be given to some resourcing of implementation oversight, if that was thought to be appropriate.
Absolutely. There are different processes that can be sometimes challenging, but recognising as well that they do need to happen sometimes in, I guess, at the same time. So the root cause analysis needs to happen quickly. Medical councils, professional councils need to act appropriately and quickly where possible. Yes, there will be some times where they all can say, well, let's, let's wait and see what happens from the coronial investigation. On the point of the recommendations, it would be really good if, if we can see, I guess, a broader view coming out of some of the inquests around what can be done, not just necessarily focused on that particular hospital, that particular context, but what else is working in other hospitals, what can be learnt from that as well? Because often the recommendations can be quite narrow to a particular hospital or local health district.
I'm sure that you'd agree that there are often multiple things that fall wrong, you know, about what has happened. Really, I'm not really aware of plans for a plan while we're here, but normally, when there's been a new habits, it's been conspiracy, it's sort of a crime. In terms of the quality of care and the profession of the medical staff, what role does the AMA play in that? Do you fight, or do you fight on what they can make, or do you take an active interest along the way?
So the AMA has no regulatory function or disciplinary function. We're a professional association, and our role is to, is advocacy on behalf of doctors, but we aren't involved in a regulatory capacity. We will sometimes support members if they've, if they're undergoing an investigation by a regulatory body, we will some, but generally, even then, we would, they would be supported instead by their medical defence organisation.
If the question's directed at that, that issue, Ms. Cusack, or the issue of representation, or the issue of whether we have a, yes?
Well, actually, if the professional, your licence, or sorry, if there are a lot of questions...
Certainly councils, certainly professional councils and HCCC could step in at a very early stage, and our role there would be to assist doctors and organisations through that process, representing them, supporting them. But the, the mechanism to step in at an early stage does exist.
All right. I've got a couple of questions. In terms of some of the submissions that we've been receiving, a number of them have been around that issue about responses to coronial recommendations. So for example, the Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody thirty-plus years ago, recommended that there should be a mandatory legislated timeframe for government agencies to respond to coronial inquiries of three months, and a number of jurisdictions other than New South Wales appear to have implemented that. Is that something that we should consider here? That, you know, when a coroner makes recommendations that affected agencies and possibly private sector bodies should have to, should be required by law to at least respond? Or, or do you want to take that on notice?
Well, I think that, I mean, our submission was that, that there should be an oversight of those recommendations, and, I mean, the recommendations may not necessarily be accepted, but they ought to be responded to in a public fashion, and that, that there's a, a feedback loop essentially, that coronial recommendations can be, you know, either acted upon or challenged.
Another set of submissions that we've received talks about the Victorian Coroners' Prevention Unit, which actually seems to provide, if you like, an evidence base, supporting coroners in the discharge of their duties, analysing information and evidence given to coronial inquiries, to create a sort of a evidence database, so that you can sort of see what's happened historically, but also future coroners have got an evidence base to draw on. And, and Dr. McMullin, taking your point about the need to make sure that recommendations are, well, if their costing hasn't been done, at least that they're viable, or, you know, that they're real world, do we need to look at some kind of supporting infrastructure for the coroner's court that they can draw on to in developing their recommendations?
I think certainly if thought was being given to making implementation mandatory, then certainly the recommendations themselves would have to be well supported, and then support given to the coroner to be able to make evidence-based, informed recommendations, and then, as others have said, that process of implementation having some structure around it, particularly given that we represent both public and private sector members. As we've referenced in our submission, the, the impacts particularly in the private sector on cost would need to be taken into account, but also the communication of recommendations. It's quite easy, in quotation marks, for hospitals or a public health, public sector to be given the recommendations of the coroner, but for that to be widely disseminated in the private sector is challenging, and so it would, obviously, if something was mandated, we need to make sure that people know about it.
I don't think the call is to mandate the implementation, but the call is to have a mandatory substantive response to the recommendations within three months.
A mandatory response would be a step in the right direction.
A, a response would be good.
Yeah.
A mandatory response would be better. A mandatory substantive response would be what you would hope for, but that's different to mandatory implementation. What's your position on a mandatory substantive response?
In terms of government, in terms of sort of public... In terms of government, in terms of sort of public sector organisations, that is likely to be more feasible than it is for independent, small individuals. And so if, if it was every doctor, if you were going to say that every doctor needs to be able to respond to a coronial recommendation, then that is.
They're normally, they're normally directed to either an institution. A coronial response is normally directed either to a substantial institution, maybe a private hospital, or, or the government, or some other regulatory body. That I can't conceive of them requiring a response from every GP. But on the assumption that they're directed to those kinds of, either a substantial institution or regulatory body or the government, do you have a position on getting a substantive response to a coroner's recommendation within three months?
So on that limit, I think we can take that on notice and provide an answer. It's not in our submission, but we can take that on notice.
Sure. One of the other issues that has emerged is the fact that the, the coroner's court is at the moment not really autonomous and it's certainly not a separate court. And we've had different submissions, either advocating for it to be a separate court altogether, or at least an autonomous part of the local court, similar to the children's court. Do any of your bodies have a view about that?
Owen does.
Oh, look, I wouldn't want to bind just to a standalone court. I, I accept that particularly former coroner Barnes had raised some important points around whether it would be better along with children's court model, I think.
Yeah, and we, we had that discussion again this morning. It's, it seems to me it's, it's not an either or. There's, there's different models, yeah.
We'd very much jump on board with one of those models. But again, recognise that there's only finite funding. So if we can incrementally move towards that, we'd welcome whatever steps can be done.
Yeah. Look, I think, a, a, as we discussed this morning, one of the, one of the problems with going to a wholly standalone is I, and I think Mr Barnes referred to this. It, it is, it is this problem that some, some coroners will burn out in a, a longer or shorter period of time. And if, if they've burned out from doing coroner's work, what do we then do with them? If it's entirely standalone, they're sort of alone without a leader at that point in time. Whereas if, if they're part of an integrated system, maybe possible to move them and they can do PCA please until they're blue in the face and probably less stressful than most, or many inquests.
If we can hold on to that expertise somehow, we're not wedded to how it's done. It's just, there's been coroners over time, some of the, you've already heard from them before this committee, developed up, built up a wealth of expertise. And how that is passed on and, and preserved would be a great thing to look at.
Yep. Mr Shubridge.
Could, could we just go back to the root cause analysis? That's a process, I think, you know, it's either 60 or 90 days after a reportable death. There's a response, requirement to have a root cause analysis, at least in the public system. Is, is that right? And secondly, does it also apply in the private system? Who can answer that? Mr Bowen, Ms McMullin?
I'm happy to. There's a sys, very similar systems by both public and private. I couldn't speak to the exact timeframe, Mr Shubridge, but 60 or 90 sounds quite familiar. And my, my memory is it might be 90. But it is of that order.
Right.
We've got 60 in our submission, but I think, yeah, it's, there are clear policies and frameworks in the public sector. My understanding is that, as Mr Bowen said, that it applies in the private sector increasingly as well.
And you'll normally get a, a report together with a series of recommendations. Would that be the standard format of a root cause analysis?
Correct, yes.
And then, as, as I understand it from the AMA's evidence, is that that is not routinely provided to the coroners? Is that right?
My understanding is that it has to be requested by the coroner. And I'm told that there are some times, and we can get back if more information is needed, but that there are challenges within the coronial jurisdiction that they need to ask for. Or they need to know that it's happened to get it. And that that information sharing is not as easy as it could otherwise be.
Is there any barriers to the provision of those root cause analyses from, say, the health department or the hospital's level? Does there have to be a sign off in terms of approval to release?
From, my understanding, the health sector would be willing to share such information. And, and there haven't been barriers put up by the health sector. It's more that it needs to be requested. Mr Bowen may know more details, it sounds like. But the, that it's the, the order of events that is the challenge.
Yeah. Look, we've seen them in coronial inquest. They've been used by the coroner as a, a building block, so to speak.
Yeah, well, I mean, when I read that, your submission, I had a little, you know, primitive Google search about the issue about root cause analysis and coronial investigations. And I was referencing a number of Queensland coronial decisions where the coroner actually leaned on the root cause analysis that came out of the Queensland Health System and referenced the recommendations and the findings and reports and said, I don't really need to revisit this because I'm quite satisfied with the outcome from the root cause analysis. That seems to, well, you wouldn't want to just have the coroner tick the box. You'd want some sort of satisfaction that it was a correct response. But not duplicating resources, understanding the learnings that happen much more quickly in the health system. There seem to be a lot of benefits in, in having a system that has at least an element of that in it.
Exactly. So that's why we've called for increased sharing of that information. We think that there is a, a delay in processes for families and for the, for the health sector and potentially unused, unnecessary use of coronial resources.
Well, that seems very low hanging fruit and you could implement that even without statutory response. You could just have an MOU between New South Wales Health and the coroner's court. That wherever there was a reportable death from the health system, it's provided, I would have thought.
We don't have a view as to, again, what mechanism makes it happen. But as you said, the principles of it being that the coroner should still take a fresh pair of eyes, not just tick the box. But that that information is routinely readily available. But it's our understanding that it's not always accessed in New South Wales and it could be more, more accessible.
I, I'm sort of tempted to ask the question that Penny Sharp asked. Is that if we've got a reportable death and as a matter of course, the root cause analyses were provided to the coroner, will all the participants in the undertaking of the root cause analysis remain as relaxed about participation in the, in the process?
There are protections in there around the identity, although of course, some things can be worked out by inference. And of course, there are protections around whether it can be used as evidence. But as Mr Shubridge just pointed out, we do have that similar process in New South Wales where the coroner can take notice of the recommendations, I guess, work them into their own recommendations. So there is, I acknowledge there's that sort of question there. I, I do think the access there is already ready. And I believe there may be some existing thing along the lines of a memorandum of understanding or a direction to make those root cause analyses available where there's knowledge of coronial inquest. Again, it might come back to people's knowledge of that ability to do that or, or realising that one's been done. Because the threshold for actually doing a root cause analysis could be higher than ordering a coronial inquest in certain matters.
Does this come back to some of what you put in your submission, Mr Bowen, about ensuring there are adequate protections on the exchange of information prior to the hearing itself commencing?
To a degree, I think. I, I, I do think around the root cause analysis question, it, it may be just realising what can be requested and provided at certain times. And realising when it may be available or not be available. Or in, in terms of not available, it just hasn't been done.
So it's a, it's a bit of a knowledge gap in some ways between the coroner's court and the health, the health system.
Can I, can I, I've got a minute.
Mr Khan.
Going back to you, Mr Barnes, so you, you talked in terms of sections. You refer to section 81 and 82 and this issue of civil liability down the bottom of page two. Are you finding that coroners are regularly opining on the question of liability? Because really, section 81 or 82 doesn't make any reference to it at all.
No. They, they're not regularly opining on it, no. Part of the problem is that we see experts in coronial matters regularly opining on it. And there's not necessarily the clear understanding amongst some of those involved in the preparation of a matter for inquest, that questions that go to things of civil liability shouldn't be explored. Or doctors who are asked to comment on reports might assume that they're being asked when they talk about how it could have been prevented, that they go into issues of, well, that person should have done that. They made a mistake there, so you need to educate them around that. So I think being clearer about that in the act would assist, not necessarily so much the coroners, but those assisting the coroners.
It would be terrible of me to say this, but years ago, when I was being trotted off to do inquests, but never did civil matters, those who were doing civil matters may have encouraged me to take lines of inquiry relating to liability, simply because it was perceived as a way of shortening the potential areas of dispute or closing off potential areas of dispute if civil proceedings were undertaken. Even to this day, I, I don't think that was a necessarily bad outcome from my perspective because it may well have shortened, well, it may have shortened the whole process in terms of resolving the litigation between the parties. You don't, you don't see that as a legitimate, if unspoken, use of the, the coroner's jurisdiction?
It, it becomes a fine balance then because we're talking about inquisitorial jurisdiction. And it has been a point, pointed out that it has a different focus and different opportunities for people to respond. Not the same focus on whether someone should have done something or not. So that the concern we have there, there is that, you know, a person who is criticised in a way that, you know, down the case, it could be a civil case against them, isn't necessarily able to marshal a proper response. And we say that puts them at a disadvantage. The problem then would be if you provide the necessary protections, we turn the coroner's court into something it's not.
But cause, cause for the purpose of the coroner is going to have a significant overlay for cause for the purpose of civil liability. You're never going to avoid that. There's going to be a substantial overlap between the two.
Even just on the finding of facts.
Yeah, I, I accept that can occur in some cases. I think the coroner walks that fine line of it being a, a, looking at the system. What actually led all of that together to this outcome? As opposed to looking at this civil liability standard or professional disciplinary standard, whether someone should or shouldn't have done a certain act.
I suppose where I get to is certainly the coroner should not be making findings of liability. That's clearly outside. But the evidence that's deduced may be quite appropriately, may, may fit two footprints.
I, I accept that.
I, I recall appearing in at least two coronials where that was an element of the, the point. It was, you were there for the family, the family had a civil matter.
Yeah.
You had a watching brief in the coronial inquest because it was relevant to other matters.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I just, yeah, I'm.
That's, that, how do you, that, I, I understand from it with your insurer's hat on, that's awkward, Mr Barnes.
I'll bring a certain.
But there's, there's, there's always going to be an element of that. It's, and it's not always bad.
I, I think the coroner should be allowed to discharge their functions. And, and the cause of death, manner of death, opportunities to improve the system, that cannot be fettered. But once we get to looking at those individual tests, that becomes the problem. And I think, I, coroners are quite good at being clear at the beginning of inquest, saying, we are not looking at civil liability, this is what our focus is. The question we have around that as well, the beforehand.
That's an observation that's not only made to the family of the, of the deceased. From my perception, it was also an observation made to the, the bevy of counsel that was appearing for the, for the medical practitioner. It was.
It's not a, it's not a defence case either.
Yes.
It's, it's on both sides, isn't it, Mr Bowen?
Yes, inquisitorial jurisdiction.
It's not your job to sort of beat up other witnesses and, and pass blame amongst different professions.
No. Hence, there is a very limited opportunity at the discretion of the coroner to contribute.
Just on that issue of system improvement, some of the submissions we've received have suggested, and I think the previous inquiry, the First Nations deaths in custody inquiry, recommended that although coroners do have the capacity now to make system recommendations, the lived experience has been that a number, a number of them don't. They take quite a narrow view of the role of the coronial. Should there be a legislative mandate to require coroners to make system improvement recommendations where that is appropriate? I mean, obviously, the coroner would have to form the view that that's appropriate. Our attention's been drawn to the Tasmanian Coroners Act that apparently has such an injunction.
Twenty eight two.
Twenty eight two of the Coroners Act in Tasmania.
I'd suggest it's, I only speak from the perspective of healthcare inquest. I wouldn't want to cast speculation on other inquests. But I, I, I do think the coroners already have a, a, a clear realisation of where they can and should exercise that function, make recommendations for significant improvements. I, I'm not sure that a, a requirement to consider that wouldn't take it any further than is already being done in that context.
If I, if I look at the, what you say and your submission says, and what Dr Matthews, I think, said with regards to the failure to, to investigate a certain lines of inquiry with regards to, I think, forensic psychiatry. It seems to me you might be working on, on, on different ends of that scale.
I, I'd actually query whether it represents a resourcing issue as well. I mean, I'm a, certainly, we, we talk of one or two percent of matters going to inquest around that. And appreciating there's, there's a variety of things that can be looked to. Many avenues of inquiry in an inquest alone, let alone the other hundreds of matters, thousands of matters a coroner deals with every year. And I, I'm not so convinced that it is not the coroner's doing what they have the time and the ability to do, but rather just a challenge of how much they've got on their plates.
Okay. Does the AMA or the college have a position on this issue of whether coroners should at least have their attention drawn to the possibility of system improvement recommendations? I mean, they do have the jurisdiction, but should their attention be specifically drawn to it in the legislation?
I don't think we'd have a position on whether the coroner did that.
And we recognise that they have the jurisdiction, but can take on notice if you want us to form a view on whether that should be in the legislation.
If you could tag it on notice, whether we should have a provision like twenty eight two of the Tasmanian legislation. Mr Shubridge.
I was hoping I could go to Dr Matthews or Dr Ellis. One of your really interesting contributions in your submission is the idea of a panel to help select the cases that go to hearing. When we've had a number of submissions from aggrieved families and others very aggrieved that their matters, that their, their, their family member's death wasn't the subject of a hearing and feeling like the decision was quite a little arbitrary. You suggest it can be sometimes quite arbitrary and you talk about suggesting of a panel. Do you want to take us to that?
Certainly. So, yes, and I, I suppose that's what the feeling of our members have been as well, that, that these, these decisions can be quite arbitrary. And that perhaps the, the process would be assisted by several people with knowledge in the particular cases that have been brought to the coroner. So this advisory panel could be, for example, led by the coroner and could include legal professionals, various medical professionals, psychiatrists, depending on the types of cases that they were going to be looking at on that particular occasion, and representatives from First Nations peoples as well. And through that, the opinions and the views and the, I suppose, the understanding of the various questions that may come up in these cases would really come to the fore. And also, I suppose, an identification during that process of various pertinent questions that may come about, particularly if there are, for example, two quite similar cases. It's been decided that one probably isn't going to progress, but one is. Is there something that we should be considering if this is, if, if issues that are appearing frequently are coming up?
Well, you, you talk, I think you suggest there might be merits in, say, of, the advisory panel could function by considering all deaths related to psychiatric illness in, say, a three month period.
Yeah.
Based on documentation presented to the panel. So you'd have a, a series of cases, you could be looking at potential commonalities. But you could also, would also, rather than have these sort of atomised individual decisions, you'd have a kind of better perspective on the scope of cases that the coroner might investigate.
That's exactly right. That's, that's our thoughts on the matter. And, and then hopefully, because we would be thinking that other major stakeholders like First Nations people would be involved in this process, we'd be able to get an understanding from their perspective regarding importance of particular points as well.
Does, do either of the other witnesses have a view about that? That concept of a, how we select, how the coroner selects a matter for hearing? Having something like a panel, it wouldn't be the same panel for every class of case. But do you have a view about that?
We, I can take that on notice.
The coroners certainly do in, in healthcare matters, draw on expertise from independent experts. And, and my feeling would be that that is sufficient where they have the ability to do that. I wouldn't exclude the use in appropriate cases. I recognise that in forensic psychiatry cases, there could be particular warrant for that. Certainly, as, as you suggested, being able to draw on different expertise at different times would be an important component of that.
Well, I mean, others, other, other suggestions for recommendations that overlap this are having sort of a larger prevention's unit or a sort of more skilled group of professionals within the coroner's court themselves, who the coroner could reference. within the coroner's court themselves, who the coroner could reference. You know, building up that body of expertise within the coroner's courts. I suppose I'll go to you, Dr Ellis and Dr Matthews. Would that be an alternative?
Yes, and I think that would also add to an empirical basis, and would potentially lend to the perception of arbitrariness being reduced. If there's a, you know, if all cases are reviewed at some level, and then, you know, select cases might be moved forward, but also having an expert panel might guide the line of questioning, and also to detect trends and patterns that might be important, that can't be picked up in individual cases.
Because there's not a huge amount of transparency at the moment about on what basis matters are selected to, well, I think I'm being polite by saying there's not a huge amount of transparency. There's minimum transparency about why cases have been selected, why this case gets a one-way hearing, why this case is dealt with on the papers, why this case has a, you know, entirely dispensed with. Do you, do any of the panel here have an understanding about how that decision-making happens at the moment?
No.
It's pretty fundamental though, isn't it?
Look, it is not, I wouldn't call it predictable on a scientific level. We might have a sense of where a matter would go to inquest or not, and it may not. Again, matters that we felt might not go to inquest do go to inquest. Why and why not, not entirely clear.
Dr Bowen?
I don't have particular expertise or knowledge in the area, but in general, we would advocate that it was a transparent process and evidence-based where possible. And as you mentioned before, the idea of having trends on a, I can see there would be some use for looking at cases at a larger level to identify trends that might not be obvious on an individual level, but don't have any specific comments around the choice of cases at the individual level at the moment, other than being supportive of the calls for increased transparency, if you're getting lots of feedback that it's not transparent.
So I would have thought at the current time, one area where there's potential to be quite a number of potential inquests relate to COVID deaths, particularly COVID deaths in the health system, whether it be in aged care facilities or Liverpool Hospital, for instance, or wherever. Those are the sort of inquiries where you would have thought they would benefit from picking representative cases and running them in some sort of, it's terrible to say, but some sort of cost-effective way, so that the common features of some or all of the cases can be explored in some detail, and the outlier issues can either be put to one side, or alternatively, not examined at all.
It has been done in the past.
Yes, I've been thinking of that too, I just can't remember where.
I guess along the, opioid medications and their use was one example of that, where the coroner was able to draw a few different matters together, quite a few, identify some themes, look at certain deaths, but also had a benefit of looking more broadly at a number of.
Music festivals, some deaths at music festivals is the most recent example.
Yeah.
But that goes back to whether or not the current act adequately directs coroners to be looking at those kind of system-wide issues. I know, Mr Bowen, your evidence is that, in your experience within the area of the healthcare work that you do, the coroner's courts do, but pretty much the unanimous evidence from the balance of the coroner's work is that they don't. So maybe there's some learning from the healthcare part that can be applied to the balance of the coroner's jurisdiction.
Well, there certainly doesn't seem to be a legislative basis for it, does there?
The prohibition on it, one way or another. Yeah, well, the decision one way or another.
No.
Any further questions for the witnesses?
No, I'm happy.
I suppose, I had a question of the, and I don't want to delve into individual case, but it comes from the individual case of the death of David Dunga. And in that, I know that the family were very keen to have the coroner investigate whether or not the circumstances in which people are held in forensic facilities, either in a dedicated forensic hospital, or in a forensic wing of the prison hospital, was very much an issue the families wanted recommendations on, but which the coroner refused to go down that path, that investigate those kinds of system recommendations. What's your experience? If you have any observations on that, feel free. But what's your view about system recommendations in relation to mental health? Are they a part of coronials normally, or are they a narrower? Do the recommendations normally narrower?
I mean, probably, I have experiences being a witness for the coroner and for interested parties, and also having been a clinician before the coroner. I think that it varies considerably. Sometimes it's limited to a very narrow issue of a case, and sometimes systems issues are looked at. Again, I think that mental healthcare occurs in a system. And so I think for the best result from a coronial investigation of a mental health-related death, some investigation of the systems ought to occur.
Dr Matthews?
My experience, or my opinion, I suppose, is very similar to Dr Ellis, that particularly when adverse events occur in mental health, it's not to do just with one single person. There's a whole system around them. And to, whether it's, even if they're a person living in the community, an outpatient, generally, there has been some sort of mechanism to whether they've attracted mental health assistance. And I think that it is reasonable to suggest that if a case is being brought towards, brought to an inquest, then that whole system should be looked at as well.
So the Tasmanian Coroners Act requires, provides that a coroner must, wherever, whenever appropriate, make recommendations with respect to preventing further deaths and any other matter, et cetera. That probably goes some way towards, if the focus is on preventing further deaths, then there's a, that directs the coroner's mind to a sort of systemic outcome. But probably, if I understand your evidence, you would probably support an express requirement to look at any systemic issues that may have caused the death?
I think that we would support a requirement to direct that it be considered. I'm not sure that it would necessarily apply in every case.
No, it wouldn't. Yeah, but only to turn the coroner's mind to it. The coroner's mind must be turned to whether or not there are any systemic issues. It doesn't have to be one, it may be just a terrible tragedy.
And in mental health cases, there are more often going to be systemic issues.
Yeah. Does the AMA or Mr Bowen have a view about an express requirement for the coroner to turn their mind to systemic issues?
I think, I mean, that's the same question, it seems to me that was a similar question that was posed earlier about, yeah.
And by no.
So I think.
But I think it goes beyond the Tasmanian.
But you're asking about the specific mental health context, weren't you?
Well, I was in the mental health context, and I think that's very clear, but in the broader.
Previously, on the broader context, we'd said that I've already got it on my list of things taken on notice as to whether the coroner should be, whether there should be a legislative clause that requires the coroner to put their mind to systemic recommendations, because that wasn't addressed in our submission.
I think it would be a good idea, putting that emphasis on the system, rather than looking at one particular hospital, group of individuals, but what can be done more broadly.
All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you to the witnesses for attending this hearing. Committee has resolved that answers to questions taken on notice be returned within 21 days, and the secretary will contact you in relation to the questions you have taken on notice. You're excused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, welcome to this afternoon's session.
You need a nudge for that.
Don't be cheeky. Now, starting on my left and just working away around the witnesses, could each of you state your full name and your position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
I'm Dr Isabel Brewer. I'm the Chief Forensic Pathologist and Clinical Director for Forensic Medicine in New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to give by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you, Dr Brewer. Ms Giggly?
My name is Rebecca Gilli. I'm the Chief-
Sorry.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca Gilli. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Forensic Medicine in New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Afternoon, Daniel Doherty. I'm the Detective Superintendent, Commander, Homicide Squad, State Crime Command, New South Wales Police Force. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Mr McLennan?
My name is Don McLennan. I'm the Manager of Coronial Services for New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Mr Follett?
Hi, Chan. My name's Mark Follett. I'm the Executive Director of the Policy Reform and Legislation Branch in Department of Communities and Justice, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And Mr Scisera?
Colonel Scisera, Commissioner of Government and Continuous Improvement at the Forensic Service in New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Well, you're all sworn, but I think we're still two minutes early. So I think I'm probably required to wait for two minutes before we formally start, but thanks for being sworn early. An unusual experience running ahead of time. Ah, there's a couple of submissions we've got for this session. There's the submission number eighteen, which is the Combined New South Wales Government submission dated nine July twenty twenty one. And last night, or yesterday afternoon, we received a further submission from the Health Minister, Mr Hazard, and the Attorney General, Mr Speakman S.C., attaching the timeliness of Coronial Procedures Task Force October report. Whether it's about that or anything else, do any of you have an opening, brief opening statement you wish to give? Okay, so Dr Brewer, Mr Doherty. Okay, well, we might as well start. Dr Brewer?
Honourable Mr Chair and other honourable members, thank you for the opportunity to appear before the inquiry as a witness on behalf of New South Wales Health Pathologies' Forensic Medicine Service. Forensic medicine is a statewide service with three dedicated facilities in Sydney, Newcastle and in Wollongong. As a health entity independent from the coroner, New South Wales Health Pathologies Forensic Medicine is well positioned in its clinical and operational independence to utilise the health-specific capabilities of the broader system. Forensic pathologists are specialised medical practitioners who provide expert medical opinions regarding the cause of death to support the coroner in making legal ruling and other recommendations. This is a complex and specialised medical legal partnership that relies on a high level of understanding of the medical practice of forensic pathology and the coronial system. Coronial post-mortem examinations can only be performed by qualified forensic pathologists who require the support of forensic mortuary technicians, forensic radiologists and radiographers, clinical nurse consultants and forensic medicine social workers. There is a national and international shortage of forensic pathologists. Forensic medicine has responded to this challenge through expanding its forensic pathology training programme and continued efforts to recruit additional forensic pathologists both locally and overseas. Before a post-mortem examination begins, direction must be obtained from the coroner. The forensic medicine model in New South Wales ensures examinations are carried out in the least invasive and most timely manner. For regional and rural cases, this can impact examination timeframes if the local magistrate is involved with other cases and unable to issue the direction promptly. Since the March twenty twenty declaration of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the initial coronial direction for rural and regional deaths has now been centralised and allocated to the senior coroner at the New South Wales Coroner's Court in Lyddcombe. Forensic medicine welcomes continuation of the centralised coronial decision-making for regional deaths in New South Wales. It is important to note that the decision-making regarding these deaths following completion of the post-mortem examination remains in the domain of the regional courts. A transformational forensic medicine information system is currently under development. This digital accelerated platform will enable better agency connections through a portal, enabling more accurate dashboard reporting to better informed performance monitoring, to continuously, in support continuous quality improvement, improvement, improved timeliness and effective statewide case management. A unique feature of the New South Wales coronial system is the role of the forensic medicine social worker. There are fourteen social workers employed by forensic medicine, which reflects a recent increase in staffing of twenty five per cent. The forensic medicine social workers liaise closely with families whose loved ones are referred to the coroner and provide compassionate support for viewing of deceased and identifications. In two thousand and nineteen, forensic medicine published a social work model of care, which informs all aspects of support provided to bereaved families. At forensic medicine, we are committed to delivering a world-leading service in support of bereaved families across New South Wales to provide the answers and support they need. We are continuing to explore opportunities to improve the coronial process with our inter-agency partners through a number of initiatives as outlined in but not limited to the New South Wales Government report submitted previously to the committee.
Thank you, Dr Brewer. Mr Doherty?
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to the committee for the opportunity to provide a submission on behalf of the New South Wales Police Force. The New South Wales Police Force are an integral part of the coronial process as they report all the deaths to the coroner and conduct these investigations on behalf of the coroner. I know this will be touched on by some of the people here in the hearings, but in twenty nineteen, there were around six and a half thousand deaths in New South Wales reported to the coroner, which a large percentage, around sixty per cent of these deaths, were found to be natural causes or medical certificates were issued. However, police utilise PCV9A reports to the coroner to document and to initiate the initial coronial process. In the metro area of Sydney, including Newcastle and Wollongong alone, there are about three and a half thousand PCV9A reports of deaths to the coroner processed each year. And New South Wales Police Force work closely with New South Wales Health, Forensic Medicine, New South Wales, TCOJ and other partners as part of a multi-agency coroner's case management unit to assist the New South Wales State Coroner. In twenty twenty, there were a hundred and twelve inquests held in New South Wales. In twenty nineteen, there were twenty five inquests held which resulted in coronial filings with recommendations for the New South Wales to respond to within six months of the Attorney General's in accordance with the Premier's Memorandum M two thousand and nine to twelve. In total, twenty five, all twenty five responses were delivered in that timeframe. In twenty twenty, there were twenty one inquests with coronial filings with recommendations to the New South Wales Police to respond within a six-month timeframe to Attorney Generals, and twenty responses were delivered in the required timeframe. New South Wales Police Force work closely with other agencies to enhance the coronial process, to improve timeliness and assist families through a very difficult time. Some of the task force and working groups that we're involved with, which may get touched on by some of the other witnesses, improving the timeliness of coronial procedures task force, which the chair has just mentioned has been tabled, the Coronial Services Committee Suicide Monitoring Working Group, the Sudden Unexpected Death in Infancy Cross-Agency Working Group, Child Death Review Team, Unidentified Human Remains Working Group, and there's other agencies and other subcommittees. This work is ongoing, and New South Wales Police Force remain committed to improving coronial processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, who has questions for these witnesses? Mr Roberts?
Oh, yeah, I have one, please, here to Dr Brewer, if I may. Your submission notes that there's a worldwide, a national and worldwide shortage of forensic pathologists. And I know that you note in here that you're making recruitment efforts, et cetera. Does, is there an authorised strength for pathologists in New South Wales? First of all, is there? Like, is there a set number that you're authorised to have?
No, we've never managed to get to a number where we can say we now have sufficient forensic pathologists. We also have a number of pathologists who's sort of reaching a retirement age, so it will be an ongoing process of recruiting pathologists. And New South Wales Health Pathology has been very supportive. You know, every time we've got an interested pathologist, they've managed to create additional positions. And there's also been quite a bit of a movement of pathologists interstate from New South Wales. And so we're constantly trying to catch up and, you know, for positions.
Sure. Okay, I'll be a bit more blunt with my question then. How many are we under strength? How many more do we need in New South Wales to operate efficiently at this point in time?
Yes, so currently we have fifteen forensic pathologists in New South Wales. So, you know, it's difficult to put a number to it, but I think, you know, we are probably looking to at least recruit, I would say, anything between one to five pathologists.
Well, there's a big difference between one and five. You must-
At any given time.
It's really a constant, it's a constant process. I've been a forensic pathologist now for, you know, twenty five years, and it's almost the first day I walked into the office, I started looking for, you know, recruiting more pathologists.
I'm not doubting that, but you must have an aim as to where you want to end up.
Yeah, yeah. I think if at the moment we can at least recruit two more forensic pathologists, that would be good. We're also, at the moment, we've got a model in Wollongong where we have a single pathologist, which is not ideal because it's always difficult to cover, find leave cover for that pathologist. So the longer term plan is also to expand our service in Wollongong to have an additional pathologist there.
A lovely city.
Can I just jump in? A Wollongong pathologist, are they doing all of this over in New South Wales?
No, I'm sorry, it's Rebecca Gilli here. No, in terms of the catchment area for our Wollongong, I can take it on notice for the exact police area command coverage and court coverage, but it is a large proportion of the southern part of the state.
South coast area?
South coast area, yeah, including Riverina.
Aubrey.
Yep.
So the Wollongong Pathologists Catchment is the coastal area, the south coast, down to Eden, and the Aubrey, Aubrey Police Command.
Okay.
And that's massive for what's this?
In terms of, in terms of post-mortems, it's consistent with the, I understand it's consistent with the number that one, that a pathologist undertakes.
That's correct. And we also have a hybrid model where our pathologist is able to still attend the training and education component of their employment. And we perform activity at our Sydney facility with the support of our agency partners and of the local courts in the southern area as well.
So how many are Newcastle?
Sorry, how many pathologists?
Sorry.
Currently, we have five forensic pathologists in our Newcastle facility, and we also have trainees.
But, I mean, I would have thought that the coroners, your unit, the forensic medicine in New South Wales Health should just have a training programme in place and be offering attractive incentives for people to train so that you have sufficient trainees to produce sufficient graduate pathologists.
Yes, so we've recently, now about a year ago, created a new position, a clinical training coordinator position. That is a part-time position for one of our pathologists who looks after the training programme. We have an established programme, and we've just recently had an RCBA site visit in Sydney, and we've received accreditation to do training in Sydney. Our Newcastle site and Wollongong site's already been accredited. The Sydney accreditation has just extended or renewed the training accreditation for Sydney. So currently we have four registrars, four trainees, two at each of the Sydney and Newcastle sites. At the moment, as I said, Wollongong has got accreditation for training, but because of the current single pathologist model, it's very difficult to train, you know, to train trainees there because of the limited exposure to a single pathologist, whereas at the other facilities, you know, there's a bigger exposure to a wider range of cases and also different approaches from different pathologists.
Well, that may be a structural failing within New South Wales- Well, that that may be a structural failing within New South Wales Health, only having a single pathologist at a unit like Wollongong. Is there any review about reviewing only having a single pathologist?
Uh yes, so there's um, there is support around consideration to infrastructure development uh to support additional workforce capability and capacity at that site. Um and as the committee could recognise that uh there's appropriate processes being undertaken in New South Wales Health Pathology to consider what those infrastructure requirements may be and um proceed them uh with advocacy for capital infrastructure to do so.
Dr Brewer, um you you said in your opening submission that your organisation is independent of the coroner's office. What is the nature of the relationship and how is it regulated? Is there a memorandum of understanding?
Um at the moment, there is no memorandum of understanding between us and the coroner.
Because you're part of the Department of Health, is that correct? Okay.
Yes, so um and as I said, you know, as the independence is because we're part of health, we can sort of function independently. Um we have close interaction with the coroners though, um especially through our front-end process, the triage process, um and that initial decision-making around um coronial direction and type of examinations. So our pathologists provide advice to the coroner on what would be the most appropriate examination, um you know, to determine cause of death in the least invasive manner. Um and um the coron- coronial directions then issued based on that recommendation usually.
Okay, taking up a point raised by, I think, Mr Shubridge earlier, um is there a sort of proactive training programme in place through New South Wales Health to attract and retain sufficient pathologist services? And and when you're addressing that and noting, I think you've said you've been losing staff interstate, is that because the coroni- is it to work in the coronial jurisdictions in those states?
Uh yes.
Is that because they get paid more in those jurisdictions or are you able to discern some sort of trend as for the reasons of departure? Um workload, for example?
I I don't think there's a a consistent reason for it. Um you know, it was um, for example, you know, one of our most recent pathologists who left went to New Zealand just to, she's a young pathologist, just wanted to broaden her experience. Um and um as I said, um you know, just with regard to the training programme, we have a clinical training coordinator who manages the training programme for the registrars. Um and she's also introducing a number of other initiatives to try to engage with, for example, medical students, um and um organise um elective um rotations of medical students at our facilities um to sort of um trigger that interest in 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 forensic pathology early on. Um our pathologist in Wollongong is also doing fantastic work around an RMO programme that he's instigated with the Wollongong Hospital where um you know, we've now have medical offices rotating through, junior medical offices rotating through forensic medicine in Wollongong. And we've actually, it's been so successful that two of our current trainees um rotated through that programme, so it really triggered an interest for them.
Might have been more success though if they'd been able to just go in and do their traineeship in Wollongong.
Yes, yeah.
All right, um uh Mr Doughty, is there an MOU between the police service and or the police force and the coroner as to uh how the coroner can access the services of the police for investigative?
There's an MOU with DCJ, my understanding.
Okay. Um can any of the DCJ representatives address that MOU? How does it work?
I'm not, I'm not aware of the MOU with DCJ, but the 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 Coroners Act provides that the coroner can direct police to investigate deaths on on behalf of the coroner, but.
I understand that, how does that work in practice?
So before we go on, are you saying there's not an MOU?
I'm I'm not aware of the MOU with DC, with police, no.
Well, I'll take that question on notice and I can confirm it then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, it's a pretty big fundamental question.
Yep.
If there's a document that regulates the relationship between police and coroners, I would have thought someone from DCJ or someone from police would know that when they turn up to an inquiry on the coroners. I just would have thought it's a fundamental question. And the answer is you don't know if there's some kind of formal arrangement.
I'm not aware.
It's not early on, it's three thirty-two.
Anyway, the point is, the point is that the witnesses are giving their answer. Can I ask this question? Um given that the Coroners Act does provide that the coroner can access the police for purposes of discharging their statutory duties, how does that work in practice? I'm assuming a coroner doesn't just ring the local police station or ring any police they know, there must be an established procedure by which this is activated. Are any of the witnesses here able to step us through how that works in practice?
Well, it's a case-by-case scenario um in relation to it, but um generally, uh there's a report of a death to the coroner, that's the first process, so the coroner's aware that that's um, that sounds like a simple process, but it goes through the the cor- um the cor- sorry, the coronial case management unit. Um there's a lot of investigation that goes into just that initial document and surrounding, forming that with, um obviously with the initial post-mortem and and other um evidence from the police. Um depending on the circumstances, if it's a death where um there's direct medical evidence that it's um a natural death or it's going to be a certificate um issued, that circumvents most of that process there and then, and it makes it easier for initial finding. Um however, if it's a drawn-out procedure where the cause of death is unknown for whatever reason, and we need further toxicology and and other testing and forensic, we may not know for some time. And it, and depending on, under the act, um there's obviously mandatory uh reporting of the, for certain deaths and mandatory inquests for certain deaths as well, and we're complying, New South Wales Police are complying under the Coroners Act.
Um Mr Doughty, there's a number of submissions we've received, and this is not a reflection on the professionalism of the police, but particularly with First Nations families, but also other families, there's a perception that because of the role of the police in the criminal justice system, that there may be, if you like, a tension, a conflict of interest in the police doing the investigative work for the coroner, and that maybe there should be, if you like, a sort of a separate set of investigators working directly with the coroner. Does the police force have a particular view on that proposal?
We, again, as as we've said, with thousands of deaths that we um have to investigate, um uh the police are well-trained and 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 well um versed in cultural sensitivity for all um all people. And uh it's a difficult time when someone's just died, obviously, um but we're very aware of the cultural sensitivity, especially with Indigenous communities. Um in terms of uh, uh so we use whatever resources are required in relation to that as well, so use our ACLOs. Um and I'm also, uh thankfully, um through DCJ and through the coroners, we now have two Aboriginal assistance officers that are there to support um the families and to provide information, um uh and engage with them. Uh and that, that breaks down a lot of the barriers and and the language, and they don't wish to particularly want to talk to the police, they've got um the staff that are willing to assist, and that's only been implemented recently, and that's had, uh especially with a couple of sensitive matters we've just been investigating recently on behalf of the coroner. Um one being um uh a death in Carney and the other one being a um a critical incident shooting uh just recently in Western Sydney. So that was uh well-received uh from us, and also they're not only explaining out the police role, they explain the coronial process, that's what they're there for, and and helping with something that probably never had to deal with before, especially with, you know, their loved one going through post-mortem and and what that examination meant, when the body can be released, all those sort of um issues.
Sorry, Mr Doughty, are you saying that for the recent shooting in Seven Hills, it's the police's position that there's been a positive interaction between the family and police?
No, with the Aboriginal assistance officers that were employed by DCJ, that they were engaged with them, with the family, that's my understanding, and that's information I've got. That was only a recent example, that they were uh there to assist and explain the coronial process.
They're not with police, they're with forensic.
Coron's Court.
Aboriginal coronial information support officer.
So, yeah, well, that that may actually be the case, that they're not police resources.
No, they're not, that's what I'm saying, but they're, it's assist the police, having that resource to explain the coronial process.
Yeah.
Because we also had the ACLO there at the time as well, the Aboriginal uh community liaison officer as well.
So, Mr Doughty, you don't see any potential tension in the role of the police acting as investigators for the coroner, and also perhaps on the same sort of facts, having a role in any criminal investigation that may arise from the same events?
Not at all, because that's their role, that's the role of the police, to be able to separate um those, well, the different acts. You look at one's going through the Crimes Act and one's going through the coronial act.
It's the same police force.
Same police force, but we're we're trained in 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 those areas. Um it's the same question in relation to, uh which probably alluded to in relation to critical incidents, um where we have, uh depending on the type of critical incident, we're able to investigate that critical incident.
But you can't train away a conflict of interest, the conflict is still there.
Or at least a perceived conflict.
You can't train a conflict away, can you, Mr?
You can train, you you train in conflict resolution, you can conflict, and you also can train in 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 cultural sensitivity, and you can also uh be professional and do what you have to do, and that's what we do. We 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 do our work on behalf of the coroner in those situations when it, for a critical incident.
I might move on to Mr McLennan, um and Mr Follett. The statutory review of the Coroners Act, are you able to give us an update as to where that is up to and when we might see the results of it?
Um yeah, sure Chair, so I understand the Attorney General has written to the committee um uh outlining in response to your request to um see the draft report.
He's declining to give us a copy.
Uh because it's a cabinet document. Um the um the position for the responding to the stat review was it was put on hold while the task force completed its work because there's a um obvious crossover in the areas that the coronial task force would be looking at. Um the work, the continuing of that statutory review is now um continuing, um because the task force has concluded its work and um the task force report, I think, was, um as you mentioned, that the Start Chair provided to the committee. Um it wrapped up in October this year, and um there are some um matters that it's moved uh referred for the continuing um oversight to the Coronial Services Committee, but the task force has wrapped up, um so the stat review will um be re-engaged and continue. I would anticipate that there will be a response to that in two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, um in relation to the task force, we received, I think, the October report from the task force uh yesterday afternoon, and it it indicates a number of improvements through initiatives to shorten the timeframes around the processing of bodies, the release to their loved ones for burial and the like, but it specifically excluded processes involving inquests and the dispensing of coronial matters by a coroner. That seems to be the missing, if you like, piece in the jigsaw. I think we've, you've had, the government's announced one additional full-time equivalent coroner to be appointed.
That's correct.
Um but looking at the number of full-time equivalent coroners that exist, for example in Victoria and Queensland, we seem to be well short at five point two, now it'd be six point two. Is there any plans to sort of up that number?
Well, that's a, it's a matter for government, in terms of how the Victorian coronial, coronial system works compared to New South Wales, it's quite different. We do about a hundred and twenty inquests a year, they do far less, but all their matters that they dispense with, uh our coroners in New South Wales provide reasons for dispensing where the Victorian coroners provide more formalised findings, so they're they're quite more involved, so there's a bit, how the work is is completed and is different. Uh we have, since the uh introduction of the statewide directions, which has been commenced when COVID uh started last year, we saw there was a number of benefits having one senior coroner making all coronial directions for New South Wales, there's a continuity of of decisions, uh we were having far greater oversight what was happening in New South Wales, and as a result of that, the government uh now appointed a a coroner, so that could be established full-time uh into the future. As far as more appointments, I'm not aware of any proposals that would increase.
Rather than asking you a sort of subjective question about whether a six point two is enough coroners, um what will the impact be in terms of um reducing the delay of going from five point two coroners to six point two coroners? What will that mean in terms of the reduced delay?
Well, I expect that you'll see a reduction in delays. Uh the, are you talking about the delays in finalisation of matters or did I? Beg your pardon?
Correct, the delay in finalisations.
Well, I can't put an exact figure on now, but I would expect there would be, uh there would be a delay in that.
Presumably there's modelling. Can you provide us on notice with any modelling?
I I can, I can take that on notice.
We can take that on notice.
Well, he's, I mean, I assume you've been involved in this um process, Mr McLennan?
Not directly, no.
Mr Follett?
Uh are you talking about the budget process or?
About the, the process of adding an additional coroner? And the rationale, so you must be aware of the rationale behind it?
I am aware of the rationale behind it.
That's supported by modelling?
Uh yeah, well, it's, it went through a budget process, so it was supported by modelling.
There's always modelling if there's budget processes.
Yeah.
Um I don't know to whom to direct this question, but a number of the witnesses we heard from this morning spoke of their experiences as a family going through the coronial process and the bewildering nature of the process, and the themes that have emerged include that there is no one person or body who uh sort of tells them what they're going to be experiencing or provides them with the information that they are going to need to go forward. For example, one family spoke about, um, anyway, those are the sort of natures of of their experience. Has any thought been given to um some kind of liaison role that actually provides families early on in the process with the sort of all of the information they might need to navigate? Whether it's, you know, you can apply for legal assistance here, or there is this counselling available for you through this mechanism, uh those sorts of milestones?
Comes in contact with the jurisdiction from the beginning to, from the beginning from when the death reported to the end, there's some sort of communication back and forth, uh either from councillors, from the CISP team or from the registry, or if the matter goes to inquest, uh the council assisting. Um there's other information on the internet, there's, there's brochures available. We do have, New South Wales is the only state or the only jurisdiction in Australia that has a coronial information support team, which is employed by Justice, and their, their sole role is to provide information and support to families, inquest support. Uh so they're advised of of if families require assistance at inquest, and they'll, they'll provide those families with education and what's going to happen uh at the inquest, and that that happens regularly. Uh there's also the forensic, the coronial uh forensic councillors who also provide ongoing support, not counselling, but they then refer them off to to councillors, so there is that support that goes through the process.
Okay, when you say refers them off to counselling, I mean, often these families don't have huge amounts of financial resources, what service, support services are provided by the state to assist them through this process?
Yep.
So uh our forensic social workers in forensic medicine engage with families within the first twenty-four hours of a reportable death, so as soon as we've received that uh a death referred by New South Wales Police to the coroner has occurred, our social worker will engage with the family. I I think I'd like to also recognise the complexities of that engagement during a time of significant distress and how much information is provided, and at times um loss of information, if we will, and we're always looking for opportunities and feedback from families about how to best provide that information, sometimes verbally on the phone work, sometimes via email, sometimes via the letters in which families ask for. So it is a multi uh strategy approach in terms of engagement with families. What we do recognise then is we also support families through each step, so as soon as a coroner's made a direction, we re-engage with the family to let them know what that direction is in terms of examination type, um clarification of whether or not there's an objection or not an objection at that point in time, and then we will also help to liaise.
That's an objection to an autopsy.
Yes, correct, an objection for an autopsy. Um we also then re-engage with the family once the examination's complete, um and then we also re-engage with the family upon release of their loved one back into um their appointed funeral director. Post that, we also re-engage, our forensic social workers will re-engage with the family for a follow-up conversation and check-in um post-three months of the release in, from our care. And what we do recognise is, you're correct, Chair, that um New South Wales is a very broad area in terms of access to any ongoing counselling support, whether that be through non-government agencies or through um private systems or through the uh GP um Medicare uh plans that are available for families. Um but our social workers do help access um certain um, you know, external agencies or points in time for families um as required.
So I think Mr Shubridge had a follow-up question and then.
Oh no, well, I just wanted to reflect back, one of your councillors got um um a very grateful, um there was some very grateful evidence given about one of your councillors coming from actually the forensic um part of the system and then following through, although not budgeted for, but following through into the coronial um uh coronial hearings. So it was very positive feedback. Um but the recommendation that came from the family was that that sort of coun- Um, but the recommendation that came from the family was that that sort of counselling and the follow-through from that moment where they have the discussion, and often it's in very, you know, very emotionally um, distressing circumstances about talking about the post-mortem and identifying the body of a loved one. Having that councillor follow all the way through to the end of the coronial, um, um, hearing seems to me a very positive potential reform. It doesn't happen now. What happens now? You have some councillors and then they have some councillors, and how does it happen now?
So throughout one of the, all of those points in time that I spoke about and in between, we clinically hand over formally to each other as required, and what we do our best in is continuity of care. So what we do is we'll speak with the coronial information support team, social workers. We won't just hand a family straight over and, um, you know, cut off in terms of from agency to agency. We work with the family and what's in their interest for that continuity of care. And that example that the family provided, I think, was wonderful feedback to that continuity of care and and, and, and why we provide it that way. I think the limitations of the question in which you're asking are absolutely correct, and that's a budgetary one in terms of capability of follow-through from the end-to-end process of the family experience in the coronial system and the resource capability of being able to provide that.
Well, I mean, let's be simple about it. It would be, I would, the, the best outcome would be a councillor who, who hears from the family once, hears about their trauma, gets to know them, follows them all the way through from the initial forensic engagement, perhaps seeing the body, all the way through to the conclusion of the coronial hearing. Um, that isn't how it operates at the moment. As you say, it's handoff, isn't it?
It can be, yes, you're correct.
Well, it can be, other than in very odd case where there's discretionary funding provided, it is.
Well, it also sometimes has to be legislatively because our forensic social worker can't actually negotiate or manage sometimes on behalf of a family some of the unique circumstances that arise, like objections, uh, like tissue retention requests, um, dispute matters that may arise that need to escalate even outside of the, uh, jurisdictional responsibilities or powers of our coroners, so.
But they're a councillor, they're not an advocate.
No, they're a forensic social worker, so they're not directly employed as a counselling service as such. So I guess that's what I was addressing in terms of capability and capacity and the difference between the two in terms of the employment of a forensic social worker.
We might go to Mr. Khan, and we can come back to that point.
Sorry, it's on, it's, it's sort of on the same field. I wanted to get back to the objection issue and particularly New South Wales, Australia has a pretty culturally diverse community, large non-English speaking or poor English speaking, uh, communities, um, and culturally very diverse. How, how do you deal with that diversity in terms of these, these discussions that you were talking about?
So we have, um, community engagement strategies that we use and we have in place. They have been disrupted by COVID.
Everything's been disrupted.
But, uh, we've certainly been, we meet with, um, depending on the community group themselves, so it could be an elders of a particular community that we meet with, or it could be a particular faith group, um, with whom we meet with. Um, and we talk through how we can best engage with the communities. From a more formal perspective, we also use interpreter services and we, um, use, you know, advocate services that we can bring in to help, uh, have those family conferences and discussions with, so we can better understand what's happening. And, um, I would defer to my colleagues in the room today in relation to the work we've also done around the timeliness process too, in terms of meeting cultural and spiritual beliefs, especially in terms of our timeliness of coronial directions, examination requirements, and then timely releases in relation to faith and burials, um, for that.
In terms of, in terms of objections to postmortems, the, the coronial information support team on behalf of the coroner negotiate with the family. So what the people, families objecting to is not the postmortem, it's the postmortem direction of the coroner under the Act. Um, if the coroner's of the view that some type of postmortem is applicable and the family are objecting, that's when the CISP team will, uh, come in and negotiate between the coroner and the family. We, we, we've gone, we've moved right away from that, what we, what used to happen many years ago, where you reported the coroner, he had a three cavity examination. No, we saw butts. We've moved right away from that now, thankfully that's the case. We, the Coroners Act says we must do the least invasive examination. We have, we have a lot of, uh, other avenues at our disposal, CT, CT examinations, ex- external toxicology, medical records review, and we've also introduced a coroner certificate under the Act, which is where no sort of, no invasive examination is required upon the body. The coroner's satisfied that the person's died of natural causes and the family's um, doesn't wish to have an examination of the body. We issue about nine hundred of those a year. So really, that's nine hundred less examinations than what would have happened years ago. But in terms of our coronial information support team, they work very well with the families. The coroner is very flexible as to what sort of examination, so as long as there's that flexibility, ninety-nine percent of the time, we, we can, we come to an agreement with the family that'll satisfy their requirements spiritually or, uh, and satisfy the requirements of the coroner. So it doesn't adversely affect any examination result that, uh, down the track that will cause difficulties for the coroner. Uh, they, they work the, the, the four within the team and now the, the three within the team and now the, um, two of general CISP officers, uh, work, work together as one unit, and it's working, it works very well and, and really as we have it, no other state and territory has it, and we're very lucky to have that, that team with us.
All right, well, can I just say, I accept all that you say and I congratulate you all for that, but we, particularly relating to the evidence that we received in the First Nations, um, inquiry, what I will observe is that in the case study witnesses that we had, I struggle to think of any of them that referred to the work that you're talking about. Have you got a view as to, i- is that because it's just a different timeframe and that what you've now, you're now doing has been relatively recently rolled out? Or is it something else that's going on? I'm not suggesting anyone.
Yeah.
Anything.
Is that okay, Chair, if I make a response to that?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, look, I think it's probably a combination. I think one's about community engagement and communication and access. So as agencies, some of the work we've been doing is things like, you know, um, updating websites, updating, so information's accessible about what our strategies and plans are. But I also think that there's recency about it. So New South Wales Health Pathology, for, for example, now has a RAP plan that's in place. We have very, uh, key initiatives that are in place within our forensic facilities particularly. We've got communities, um, now where we have, for example, donations from elders or with Aboriginal quilts that we put on deceased persons. We identify persons by country now, even when we put them to bed and we're caring for them. We do smoking ceremonies. So there's a whole range of strategies we have in place, but I would probably make an assumption that's about newness of the model and the changes we're making, uh, such as the ones referred to earlier in terms of employment of the Aboriginal health liaison officers, which is probably now about eight weeks since their employment. So I would be indicating that the feedback that, um, uh, members have provided to the committee is based on history and their right, and what we've been doing as agencies is working together on how we can improve that.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mr. McLennan, this is to you then, the coronial information support team, when did that actually start?
They started off, it followed an inquiry, uh, into the forensic medicine in relation to organ retention.
Just a year will do.
I think it was around two thousand.
Two thousand.
And, look, if that's incorrect.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine. Can you just flesh out for us then a bit about the coronial information support team? Like, how many members do you have? Do they actually go out in the field and visit and sit with the families, or is it all over the phone? How's it actually work?
The, we, we have three, uh, full-time members of the CISP team, and then we have two Aboriginal CISP team. So the Aboriginal CISP team, the two, two, two newly created positions, and their role is to, from the, from the, from the ti- point in time when an Aboriginal person is reported to the coroner, that they will have, they will make contact with the family and continue the support of, and provide coronial information support to that family from the beginning till the completion of, of the coronial jurisdiction. The coronial information support team, their main role is to provide information to families on the processes, on, uh, inquest, on inquest support. Uh, they, they also deal with objections to postmortems, uh, next-of-kin disputes, uh, and they also provide, uh, they also sit down with families and some, for instance, we get lots of requests for families to look at, um, coronial scene photos, which we don't normally give out because of the nature. So they'll sit down with families, go and go through the brief, coronal brief with the family, show them photos. So they have this ongoing support, and it's really an information exchange between the coroner and the family that conduit between, uh, passing on information and then passing information back to the coroner.
But that.
Okay, well, sorry, Mr. Roberts, and then Ms. Sharp, and then.
Last question. Do they visit the families in the, in their homes though, or do the families got to come to the, to the coroner's court complex?
We've, we've had them go out to, to regional areas and visit families, um, they, they, they come into work, whatever. In the last year or so, we know that, that things have been difficult, but it, there's nothing to prevent them going out, and they have done that in the past.
Okay, Ms. Sharp.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, I can't see you very well, so I'll just direct my question badly and we'll see who responds. Um, I have a question. I'd like to, and other members have touched on this, so how many people are there specifically to provide that support? So obviously, forensic, some social workers, how many?
Forensic medicine currently has fourteen forensic social workers.
Yeah, thank you. And how much, and so then within the coroner's court, if I write, if I understand correctly, there's two general and there's recently been two appointed First Nations people, is that right?
No, there's three, and three, uh, general CISP officers and two Aboriginal CISP officers.
And that's in total?
That's in total. They provide a statewide service, sorry.
Yeah, and, and from your submission, the police also have some role in terms of the family liaison, is that correct?
Well, with the, um, OIC of a investigation of a death, um, depending on the, on the nature of it, um, there may be, it's just the OIC having constant contact with the family members, or would be a family liaison person appointed, uh, to, uh, do that, in, in, depending on the scope of the, the inquiry. It also depends on the, um, the type of death it is, and obviously there's different, uh, responses when it's, um, a young baby for a SUDI death, for example, then, um, uh, uh, maybe to another type of death like a suicide of an adult. Um, so again, there's all different vagaries and challenges around all those issues, and there's different support groups for those, um, types of deaths as well, that would, they get referred to on top of the ones that have been mentioned already. Uh, for example, we get, there's a lot of support groups in relation to, uh, deaths of child or, or baby through the SUDI or, you know, Red Nose Foundation, those type of organizations. There's, uh, several, um, suicide, uh, support groups and victim, and Victim Services is another, a great, um, support service. Depending on the type of death again, whether it was a car accident, there is a newly formed support service has been implemented along the same lines as the homicide victim support group, which is a great organization. And there's other, you know, there's other NGOs.
Yeah, so essentially, the police officers or the officer in charge would just refer them to the police.
Yeah, but they'd keep on continuing, they have a continued liaison, um, uh, for the police with the family.
Well, it's, it's.
So can I just say that that's not been the evidence that we've had from, you know, and I accept that we've only had a small sample of people, but, I've got to say, I'm not sure that's how people would, um, say that. They often say that they just hear very little, um, you know, for a long period of time before they get that. I am interested, um, though, I mean, given the numbers of cases that you're dealing with that are significant, um, whether you think there isn't, you know, recruitment of two new First Nations people is obviously welcome. Sounds to me, if you've only got five and forensics have got fourteen, there's disparity there.
The, the, well, the, the forensic social workers have a very different role. They make, they, they make contact with every family as soon as the, the death's reported. That's not the case with coronial information support. They, they deal with any certain, uh, situations and like objections and brain, organ, organ retention or assistance as required.
Mr. Sheerbridge.
Sorry, I'm just. Oh, sorry. No, you go, Penny.
Yeah, I, I wanted to know, I just know, so the police are responsible for the thirty-day letters, is that correct?
Uh, I missed that, sorry.
Thirty-day letters, who they're referenced in your submission, which is basically where a family has requested an inquest. Um, and then there's a liaison with the family where the coroner's decided that, no, there's not going to be an inquest because of thirty-day period. My, my reading is incorrect, please tell me.
No, thirty-day, I'm sorry, the thirty-day letter's issued by, by coroners, so if a coroner's made a determination that they don't feel that an inquest is required, but the family have indicated that they wish for an inquest, the coroner's considered those, that those reasons for the inquest, but still is of the view that an inquest, uh, isn't necessary. Uh, the family is provided what was referred to as a thirty-day letter indicating that the, the coroner had made that determination and offering them uh, a period of time to, to make further submissions as to why the coroner should hold an inquest. Uh, and based on those submissions, all those further submissions, the coroner then makes a determination.
I was trying to, yeah, it's a police, police deal with those, that's what it says in your submission.
No, that's, well, it's a matter, they're, they're a letter that's sent out by some coroner, not all coroners do that. Um, the, the practice, it's revolved now into a practice where the coroner would simply write to the family indicating their, their, the view that the matter should be dispensed with, giving those reasons and then offering the family a, a time to respond, but we, we, it, it's certainly the thirty-day letter is something that is common within the coroner's court.
Your submission says on page twenty-two, it says on page twenty-two.
Yes.
Police coronial advocates perform.
Advocates do that. And so, so thirty-day, so my understanding is that thirty-day letters are kind of automatic. The letter goes to the family that invites them to provide another re, you know, another, another reasoning about why, you know, they'd like to, uh, look at the, at the, um, an investigation. But I'm just trying to clarify, who actually, when you say the police liaise the family members, including the preparation of thirty-day letters, is that, have, can you just tell me what that process involves?
Okay, good, well, the police coronial advocates are, are advocates who are situated within the coroner's court, who assisted the coroner in some inquests. Uh, sometimes they're directed by the coroner to issue a thirty-day letter. It doesn't happen often, but they can do that on behalf of the coroner. In, in most cases, it's the court registry, the coroner's reg, the court registry issue those letters. But it certainly can be the case that the police advocates on the instruction of a coroner, uh, can, can issue those letters.
And why would the police be doing that?
Well, they work within the, they, they have a, they're, they're assigned matters by the coroner, they're asked to review the matters and provide uh, a review to the coroner. If the coroner makes that determination, the coroner then continues, it's like the coroner working with Crown Solicitors, they, they sometimes prepare letters on behalf of the coroner and send them out to families or stakeholders or, and that's the same situation where the coronial advocates, if the coroner has, does ask them to, will provide those letters to the family.
Are they legally trained?
Some are legally trained, yeah.
They're from the, uh, police prosecutions.
So I don't want to take a lot of the time of the committee, I am very interested in this issue, though. Essentially, if you're given the standard, the person's families, particularly if they've asked for an inquest and that's not been undertaken, or whatever, you know, I'm not suggesting that there's bad reasons for that, I'm just indicating that. Are you able to take on notice for us, um, maybe just to, you know, I don't want to get too much, but maybe in the last three years, given we've had two years of COVID, um, the last three years, the number, the number of requests from families and the number of thirty-day letters who actually provide those letters to the family?
I can take that on notice.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheerbridge. Um, probably to you, Ms. McLennan, um, we had the AMA and one of the medical insurers in earlier. Um, their, their understanding was that the root cause analysis, um, investigations done by New South Wales Health following a death um, are often not requested by the coroner and not obtained by the coroner. Um, do you have any, can you shed any light upon why that's happening?
The root cause analysis is often requested by the coroner, but it can, but there's a, I can't think of it now, there's a law that, that indicates that the root cause analysis can't be used at an inquest. That's coming, I, I don't, I don't, can't think of what the section is now. But the, the root cause analysis is still routinely requested by the coroner under section fifty-three. When we request medical records, we also request a root cause analysis. But that, that root cause analysis under the legislation, if I can take, give it, take that on notice, what the legislation is, it's a health act.
Public Health Act?
Good, good, I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
Um, but, but it, 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 it specifically says it can't be used at inquests or other proceedings.
Um, can you explain if there's a rationale behind that?
I'm, I'm, I'm not the author of the legislation, I have no.
Legislation we should know.
The root cause analysis.
I don't recall doing it myself, that's.
It was a valuable, it was a valuable tool for coroners for inquests, it was a very valuable tool, because the root cause analysis had recommendations. Uh, it, it can't even, my recollection, it can't even be referred to at the inquest.
Could you, um, take on notice, if you can, if there's any institutional knowledge about? Could you take on notice, if you can, if there's any institutional knowledge about what the rationale for that is?
I don't know whether.
Yes, there's a New South Wales Health Policy Directive around root cause analysis and I would probably dare to say there's meaning behind within that, that on notice we could provide back in relation to.
That would be useful, because it's, I mean.
I think it's got to do with no fault.
Yes.
Getting the truth of what's occurred there.
Hmm.
Um, trying to cope with culture, but.
Yeah, I can conceive of rationales, other jurisdictions have them regularly used in coronial investigations, just New South Wales is an outlier in that regard, but we might get some answers on notice.
Yep.
The Health Administration Act nineteen eighty-two.
All right, but not only saying that it's regularly requested by coroners.
We still request it because.
Relevant.
It's very relevant and it has recommendations in there, so it's good, the coroner can still form recommendations around that root cause analysis without referring to it.
So it's kind of like almost, well, sorry, sometimes it's obtained by the coroner, but not used in the coronial proceedings, is that what happens?
Exactly.
Well then, how is it, so then no, no party to the coronial proceedings can make submissions on it?
No.
It kind of has half existence in coronial investigations? That seems awkward.
It is, and it's, I think it was only a matter of some years ago that that occurred. Prior to that, the root cause analysis was regularly called for and referred to in proceedings.
And there clearly would be forensic benefits in the coronial process for being able to openly refer to it.
Particularly around the recommendations. And I know that we talked about no fault, but the coroner doesn't dare to look at who was at fault. The coroner's there to look, trying to prevent deaths and making recommendations to do that, so it was a very useful document. So in a, in a, in a, in a backdoor method, say, we still use it, but it's simply not referred to within the proceedings.
Right, I understand. Can I ask you about the triaging process? Only two percent of reportable deaths end up having a coronial investigation, a coronial hearing. What is, what are the criteria used to determine when a matter gets a, an investigation and when a matter does not?
We, in New South Wales, we have around six thousand five hundred deaths a year. Each matter is triaged through the duty pathologist, through the regional triage unit in Newcastle or the coronial case management unit in Sydney. We have a duty pathologist, duty coroner, social workers, police, there's an all number of people there. The matter's presented to the coroner in Sydney, if I've used Sydney as example, there's, we have a duty coroner every week. The matter's presented to the coroner and a recommendation is given by the duty pathologist and there's discussion run. So the coroner makes a determination at that point, what type of examination, forensic examination is required, if any at all. And also makes a determination as to what type of coronial brief is required, if a coronial brief is required. When that material comes in, the coroner makes a, has five things to determine, identity, date, place of death, matter and cause of death. So that's the basic things that the coroner does find. Section twenty-three matters, which are death in custody, death in police operations, they all require an inquest. No matter if a person dies in natural cause.
I'm not, I know there's no triage there, they all have hearings, that's very.
They have hearings, so putting aside.
It's the other ninety-nine point five percent of matters that I'm asking about.
Well, it's those matters where the coroner feels that a recommendation can be made that might prevent deaths of a similar nature in the future. You can only make a recommendation after holding an inquest, you can't dispense with a matter and hold an inquest. There has to be procedural fairness applied to those persons that the recommendation affects. So those matters where the coroner's of the view that recommendations should be made would require an inquest. Where the coroner is not satisfied as to the, to the, to the cause of death, the manner of death or the identity or there's issues that need forensically or need further examination, the coroner in those occasions can require an inquest. There's no, however, there's, and honest, working in the system for so long, the coroners often talk about it. They say, how do we get to a point where we say, this is the sort of matter we have an inquest? But there's no sort of magic formula, it's a matter of each matter, you look on the facts. If they can't be satisfied as to one of the statutory requirements and for instance, the cause of death or the identity, the coroner might hold an inquest to see whether that may hold an inquest. Because an inquest might just hear, might be the, might just hear the same evidence that the coroner's already aware of and it's not going to create anything further.
Well, you see, that's probably, given ninety-eight percent of matters don't go to a hearing, don't have an inquest, that decision is kind of the critical decision, isn't it? For the overwhelming majority of reportable deaths, that decision is the single most important decision, would you agree?
There's no visibility about how that.
There's no, there's no guidelines?
There's no magical formula, no.
Well, let's be clear, there's no guidelines.
Yes, the guidelines are the Coroners Act.
Well, can you point to anywhere in the Coroners Act that structures that decision making?
Well, there's a section within the Coroners Act that talks about when an inquest is required to be conducted.
Yeah.
And that talks about when the coroner's not satisfied, where one of those criteria, the manner and cause hasn't been sufficiently disclosed.
That's when, that's when one is required, but that is a tiny minority of inquests. So we have a tiny minority of inquests where there's a statutory requirement because one of those matters can't be satisfied. Although I thought your evidence before was may.
May, because the coroner, if you simply don't have an inquest, if the evidence is not going to be available, then it's going to assist the coroner.
So even that's discretionary, so we have a handful of cases where it involves police operations or a death in custody and they must be done. But the other, the other overwhelming majority of decisions, there's no statute, there's no policy, there's no guideline.
It's a decision of the coroner itself.
How do we know those decisions have been properly made?
There's the senior coroners who are trained within the jurisdiction, who look at each case carefully as to whether there's a requirement for an inquest, taking into account the family's views, taking into account what they need to, what they need to establish and whether is there anything that is going to come out of the inquest.
But you see, does anybody review the a year's decisions? Is there any qualitative analysis of those decisions?
If a decision is made to dispense with an inquest by a coroner, there's a, there's a process where that decision can be appealed. Whether the state coroner can review the decision of the coroner that dispensed with the inquest. And then that can either, that state coroner after reviewing can either support the decision of the coroner or make the decision that an inquest should be held, and that does happen regularly.
So if you're an aggrieved family and you're concerned about the decision not to hold a, an inquest, how do you start drafting a submission or seeking that to be reviewed if you don't know the basis upon which the original decision was to be made? And you don't know the basis upon which the review determination will be made? How do you go about that?
When a coroner dispenses a matter, they provide reasons for dispensing the family, or that's one of the documents the family can apply for or have, and they can see the reasons why the coroner's made that decision to dispense with the inquest. And most of the, most of the representations we have, we receive from families, if they're not satisfied with the coroner's finding is simply an email to the court and it's very informal, we don't require any great deal of formality.
You don't, you don't, you don't recognise there's a difficulty with the single most important decision in the whole system being an utterly unstructured discretion? You don't, you don't see a problem with that, Mr McLennan?
No, each case where the coroner makes a determination, the family's given, provides an advice to the coroner. The coroner will not dispense with the inquest unless there's an advising to the family, yes or no, do they require an inquest? If it's yes, and they've given, they've provided their reason, the coroner will address those reasons to the family generally by the letter to the family where they say, even though you've asked for an inquest, this is why.
Well, just to the point, I'm just, sections twenty-five and twenty-six of the Act seem to govern this. And it's pretty clear that unless the coroner's required by law to hold an inquest, they may dispense. There is a process to go through, they've got to ask the families and medical practitioners and the like, but it's very process driven. And then there's nothing in the body of the provision that indicates any yardsticks by which a coroner would discharge their discretion. Often in legislation, when there's a discretion, there will be some at least guiding principles. Here, there are really no guiding principles and unless you tell me differently, I don't think there's a coroner's practice note to, that sort of colours in some of the gaps.
No.
So it really is a discretion at large. And frankly, some of the evidence we've received from former coroners and a deputy state coroner was that largely the decision is being driven by overwork and a lack of resources and a lack of time by coroners' magistrates who simply don't have time to do inquests. So they're dispensing with the need to have inquests, even though maybe they shouldn't. And this is of real concern to this inquiry because of the lack of judicial officers.
Look, in terms, I can't answer that, that's, because that's not a role I play as a coroner dispensing with those inquests.
No, but you must be aware of those issues in the system.
I'm aware that they, look, we did, there's a, each coroner does have a large workload. But from my experience, the coroners, that's not something that plays on their mind when they're dispensing or.
Mr McLennan, that can't be your evidence, can it?
Yes, it is.
Are you saying that coroners don't take into account their workload or their capacity to hold a hearing? An inquiry, you're saying they don't take that into account when they're making decisions about whether or not to dispense with a, an inquiry, you're saying that's not part of their decision making?
Well, I don't know what's in their head at the time when they're making that decision, I mean, that's how I answer that.
Well, you told me the kind of things that were on the mind of judicial, of coroners. You told me earlier, a bunch of factors that were on their mind.
Generally.
Now, you're telling me that this one factor that is a little awkward, you can't give any evidence about whether or not that's in their mind.
That's not what you asked me before, you're saying to me that the time to restrain is something that plays on their mind, I can't, I can't answer that.
No, I want to be clear, resource constraints are resource constraints, one of the considerations taken into account by coronial, by coroners when determining whether or not to have an inquest.
I don't think it plays a predominant role, I don't.
Well, that is, I'll give you the opportunity to reflect upon the evidence that we've had of, we had, we had quite contrary evidence from former coroners who made it very clear it was a very substantial part of their thinking and a very substantial matter for them. Your evidence seems to be contrary to their evidence and I'm just wondering how to, how to square the circle about two very contradictory pieces of evidence.
It's not contrary to them, I'm just saying.
I just think that Mr Sheerbridge is asking the witness to read other people's minds and I think that he has answered the question to the best of his ability. And maybe it's a valid issue, but maybe we need to still have a very.
I thank you, I don't uphold the point of order, but I think Mr Sheerbridge had asked the question and the witness was answering, but we do seem to be going around in circles a bit here, so maybe this can be the last question on this specific point.
Square the circle.
Well, I think to be fair to the witness, he can't answer for anybody else.
Mr McLennan.
Look, we do, each coroner does have a very high workload. But to my knowledge, I'm not aware that they don't hold inquests because of that workload capacity. Where there's, where an inquest is necessary, my, my view is that they will hold an inquest if it's required.
Well, all right, but there, you, we have the difficulty though, don't we? That there are no, we can't tell what criteria coroners are using because there's, there's no policy, there's no legislation, there's no guidelines that identify the criteria.
In the magistrate's bench book, I understand there might be guidelines, I'm not a magistrate, so I don't, I don't have that, I'm not aware of it.
If you've got any information from the magistrate's bench book that you could provide on notice, that would.
I don't have access to it, I'm not a magistrate.
Okay, well, well, we'll also be speaking to the state coroner.
Just scroll through the magistrate's bench book.
If there is any information you have around that, you can provide that on notice if you could.
I understand, there's a bench book that provides some sort of guidance to the coroners, but I, I'm not a magistrate, I don't have access to it, so.
Okay.
And there are provisions in the Act, they're fairly general.
Okay, I think we've well established that outside the provisions of the Act, there is no other guidance for magistrates as far as we're aware in the exercise of the coronial jurisdiction, so we might move on to any other different topics that members have to pose these witnesses.
I do, and I think to Ms Gillie and Dr Brown, if I pronounce it correctly, one of the things that interests me is that we talk about the release of the body. What I'm interested in is the timeframe for the obtaining of the toxicology reports. I'm going back a long way since it was relevant to me, but it seemed to me that there was one of the significant delays in matters progressing, whether it be criminally or in the coroner's court was often the toxicology reports. Is that something of the past or does it remain, remain an issue in terms of the final issuing of the death certificate and the like? Or the autopsy report?
So currently, we generally get the toxicology results back within fifteen working days, so three weeks. We also have a process of an express toxicology where in, in certain instances, we use it, you know, if there's an objection by family and the outcome of the coroner's decision about the type of examination depends on that result, we will arrange an express toxicology, so that takes about seventy-two hours. There is some work we need to do in that space around the express toxicology. At the moment, it is available for our Sydney facility, for example, but you know, as soon as you go to the regional areas, it does become, there is an extended timeframe around getting the express toxicology. So generally, it does not.
And why is that? We're doing Covid tests, getting the reports back hopefully within twenty-four or forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Now, I understand the toxicology reports are of a different nature, but certainly the transport of the material about is pretty well overnight in a little bag. Is it different in terms of these samples?
No, you're correct, that the transportation's overnight, so you're looking at twenty-four to forty-eight hours pre getting on the analysis.
Yeah.
Equipment.
Accept it.
And then the seventy-two hour timeframe for the result, the results are all electronic now. So the result themselves, we get, every morning, we receive the results that come through and then they're dispersed out to the doctors accordingly. And that's created an improvement in timeliness in terms of receiving those results. But you're correct, that transportation is the key factor for our rural regional areas.
Okay.
So my next, next question goes, in a sense, to forensic pathologists. I was looking at newspaper articles, which are often not helpful in any matters, but anyway, on this occasion, it appeared to. Has there been a change in, in essentially the qualification level, and this is in the last few years, qualification level that's been required for forensic pathologists and how has that impacted? There was a matter reported in twenty twenty, I don't want to go into those, those specific issues, but has that impacted on the availability of forensic pathologists and the training thereof?
A couple of years back, and I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is, but I would say maybe about twelve years ago, the ICPA changed the qualification, there's different pathways that you can follow to become a forensic pathologist. It used to be a subspecialty of an anatomical pathology, so you had to become an anatomical pathologist first and then specialise in forensic pathology. That changed a couple of years back where forensic pathology became a speciality on its own. So you can purely decide you want to be a forensic pathologist. You do eighteen months of anatomical pathology and the rest of your time you spend within forensic pathology as a forensic pathology trainee. So it has made it in a way easier to attract pathologists who specifically want to specialise in forensic pathology. It hasn't affected the quality of the training at all. At the moment, we have a sort of a hybrid of people that purely qualified as anatomical pathologists who has some experience in anatomical pathology, then specialise in forensic pathology and we have those ones who have purely, you know, done the forensic pathology training.
And where's that, the training performed? Obviously, some of it is in-house, so to speak, but in terms of the academic component, is that?
Yes, so all the, all the training is work-based training. So the first eighteen months is, or eighteen months of the training occurs in an anatomical pathology accredited training facility. And the remainder of the training occurs within a forensic pathology facility. And as I previously said, all three of our facilities are accredited through the ICPA as training facilities. We currently only though have those trainees in Sydney and Newcastle.
All right, I'm done.
Okay, those committee members online, do either of you have any further questions? Okay, those committee members online, do either of you have any further questions? Okay, Catherine and Penny.
Yes, so we've, in the couple, in the last two years or so, we've managed to reduce the backlog of cases by about 48%. So we striving, we aiming to have a turnaround time of about six months for an autopsy report. So that's, there's ongoing work that we're doing in introducing some efficiencies for the pathologists. For example, our forensic medicine information system will have templated, standardised autopsy reporting templates that will make it easier for pathologists to do the reporting. And we also have a priority request system whereby either through communities and justice or through our forensic medicine social workers, families can, or, you know, for legal purposes, we can, we do receive requests for priority prioritisation of reports. And it's often, you know, families who are in need of a medical cause of death certificate because they want to, you know, otherwise they can't claim insurances, et cetera. So, yeah, so we do have a way of accommodating that and each patho... No, that is done within, we're part of Forensic and Analytical Science Service, so, but that's a different division within...
And in relation to the grave, I would find it very valuable to have a roadmap of, or a flowchart of when, when a matter is, like, a picture of a running inquiry. How that case is handed by the police according to the type of hits. So for example, in relation to a murder, he's lost it, he wouldn't have homicide involved in that. That would be ITN managed by a different branch of the police. But if you could talk about the initial investigation, where that case goes. The reason I ask about the roadmap is, Patti's actually, we just got Miss Sharp, who'd been negative feedback from the family. I think the initial liaison was regarded highly by the family and it was when they claimed it was homicide. And the reason we had to homicide was because it was, the police were involved in the death of the president. So this is a very crucial subject of matters that's linked to the coroner. I hope you're talking in my direction. I don't think, somebody can go, if I'm remaining in actual part, and I, 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 I just need some sort of different flowchart as to where those visits go to in relation to many of the private fleets and which fleet ended up being opened by the coroner.
It's a pretty big scope of a question in relation to providing a flowchart for each matter.
Do you want to have some sort of a protocol? That, so when the body of somebody is found in it, the police that they've had a drug overdose, the police on the scene must know where that case comes from.
I guess this must be getting to the standard operating procedures for different death types.
That's right, and there's a police handbook.
Yep.
There's a police handbook, and there's obviously different training, depending on the type of death.
To the extent that you can provide us with that.
Can you give us a flowchart of it? That would be really important to know. Because how did you, as, 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 and the case was handed off inside the police service? How did the counsellors who were initially there, the family, when they got the terrible news? Did they seem to manage it straight because the different branches of the police take it over? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, they're trying to track the protocol anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, with that, with that question though, if that's a...
All right, well, to the extent that Mr., the police can do that, they'll provide us their standing, standard operating procedures relating to different death types as you've asked for. Ms. Sharp, did you have some questions? We seem, we seem to have lost Ms. Sharp.
I like that.
Any other committee members with questions?
Yes, I had some questions.
You had some further questions, Mr. Shubridge?
The progress report on the, progress report on the improving the timeliness of coronial procedures task force, which is dated October 2021, but, which I received about 23 hours ago. The, it doesn't have any actual data in it. It doesn't put in the number of cases that are backlogged, the current average delay for any, any part of the process. Mr. Follett, that's your report largely, I, I note. Do you have any of that data? Does the task force have that data?
Yeah, we're collating the data, so, and the task force notes, I think it's in the next step, so that it's transitioned its work to the coronial services committee, which is the state coroner chairs. We've set out some key performance indicators in the task force report. The plan is for the coronial services committee to have oversight of progress against those key performance indicators and collate the data. And it'll be ultimately a matter for the coronial services committee around...
But this task force was established in July of 2019. We're now in November of 2021. You're telling me it's been going for two and a half years and you haven't collated the data?
Well, sorry, just to clarify, collated the data against the key performance indicators that the task force has agreed upon. So there's a number of actions that that report sets out that the task force undertook. If you're talking about the, the data that I'm talking about, it relates to the KPIs.
Well, you must, you say in your report, the lengthiest phase of the coronial process is the post-mortem investigation. Well, what's the data on that? What's the median timeframe for a post-mortem investigation?
I don't have that to hand, Mr. Shubridge, but I'm sure we can, if that data is available, which I suspect it is, we can provide that. I can take that one on notice.
Well, I mean, I could go through and identify each of the points in your report and ask you to take them on notice, but a much more useful response would be, if you could, provide us with all of the data you have on the actual timeframes for each of the critical steps.
I don't think that's the way. I think if you've got specific things, and I'm not suggesting it be done now, questions can be put.
I might just ask my question.
Yeah, well, you can ask your question.
Do, you must have a data set for, for this, for this task force, you must have a data set.
Yeah, we, we do, Mr. Shubridge, we do.
Well, can you provide that data set to the committee?
I mean, obviously, I wouldn't provide the committee's workings because a lot of that is different agencies' documents, but if, if there's particular data sets that you're after in terms of timeliness, we could...
Well, you must have data on timeliness.
Well, Mr. Shubridge, is a better way to proceed to put questions on notice?
Precisely what I was suggesting.
Well, do you have any?
Eight minutes.
Well, if you've, I really don't appreciate constantly being spoken over by you this afternoon, Trevor. It's not fruitful, it's not fruitful, and I'll ask my questions and you ask your questions.
Many members will speak through the chair?
And you ask your questions. Well, I think that's a good, I agree with you, that's a good start.
Committee members should address themselves through the chair, not to each other.
What is the average length of delay between death and the provision of a post-mortem report?
If, I don't know that often, Mr. Shubridge, but we can provide data on timeliness that backs up some of the report's findings on notice if that's going to help.
Have delays reduced over the last, since July of 2019, when the task force was established?
Yes.
By what magnitude?
I can't recall off the top of my head.
Well, just, what's caused the reduction?
What, what's caused the reduction? Well, I mean, the, sorry, delays in terms of post-mortem releases.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Shubridge, I think Mr...
Been effective, what's been the most effective measure so far that you've implemented in reducing delay?
There's been some reduction in reporting natural causes of death. So that's been effective.
That's the statutory reform.
The statutory reform, correct.
Well, Mr. Follett, can I put this to you quite directly? The, the reports you've given us are about reducing the delays in everything other than the actual coronial inquest process itself, correct? Oh, it expressly excludes that. It says, we're not dealing with coronial inquests, we're not dealing with the work of the coroners in dispensing with inquiries. It's about other parts of the process.
That's right, it had four key drivers.
So we've received a fair bit of evidence that says it can take a number of years from death to final coronial decision or, you know, recommendation. It can take five or six years, and we all agree that's far too long. So I guess what we really want to know is, the reforms you've implemented, how much will that reduce that backlog?
Yeah.
Of time? And what are you going to, well, what is being done to tackle the rest of the back, the delay? I mean, a significant amount of delay seems to be, frankly, the lack of judicial officers to actually process the work. So what have you done so far and what, how much will that reduce?
Yeah.
The back, the time, the delay for?
That's a fair question, Chair, and, I mean, the, the task force really focused on four discrete areas.
I understand that, we're not being critical of the task force, we're now just trying to look at the other parts of the process that we've received evidence on.
Yeah, we, well, on notice, we can provide data behind time.
And any, any data you've got on timeliness and measures to improve it and projections about, well, what has been achieved and what is hopefully, hopefully to be achieved from those measures would be very useful in our deliberations.
Is timeliness the ability to deliver a, a, an outcome in a timely fashion? Is that part of the decision-making when coroners are deciding whether or not to hold an inquest? Is timeliness one of those things? Are there, well, that's what the first question, perhaps to you, Mr. McLennan?
It plays a role, yes.
Are there, are there reports that the coroner's court gets about delays and length of time? Are they generating that data themselves and comparing it over time?
Well, with the coronial services committee, which is chaired by the state coroner, those, it's taking out from the task force. And the whole idea of that, of the coronial services committee taking over that role is that we'll be able to then monitor those, we'll have those, that data, we'll be able to monitor those against, against what we expect is a timely procedure. Because there's, there's delays, we, we're trying to reduce delays, not just in the completion of the matter, but in, in having the matter, having the, the examination body released. And so there's a number of steps through the whole process.
This brings me back again to the concerns I have about that kind of data-driven KPIs, because one of the best ways of reducing delays is to rapidly dispense with the need for an inquiry and finalise a matter, which works against the wishes of the family, the benefits of systemic reports. How, how, how are those things balanced?
I mean, there's, in the statute, obviously, there's the steps that, that will need to be taken in making that decision that was set out in, in the Act.
Given the time, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Scisera? I've just noticed he's been on the line very patiently all afternoon and no one's posed a question to him. Not suggesting that anyone needs to, but if anyone has questions for him now, it's probably the time in the last three minutes.
I had, my questions are about supporting families, that's all. But I'm happy for Mr. Scisera. I regularly, very, very regularly, have family members where there's been a death in custody, desperately just trying to get some assistance, either from corrective services or from attorneys general, for something as basic as being able to afford the cost of travelling to Sydney and staying in Sydney for a week while the coronial inquest is held. They can't afford travel, they can't afford accommodation. Is there any policy in place for corrective services to assist families in those circumstances?
Thank you. There are limited circumstances that we can provide some financial assistance, but they are limited. We will assist where we can. The commissioner has the capability of assisting if somebody has a physical condition, but they are very limited.
And is there any other agency that has the ability to help families out in that most practical need that they have? To be able to actually afford to come to Sydney to be there for the inquest in relation to the death of their loved one? Can anyone else help?
It's a, it's an issue that comes up from time to time. That, that, what you raise is where a person might come from, live in the regional New South Wales but die in a facility in, in Sydney. It's a difficult, it's a difficult area. Our court, the coroner's court, is not set up to provide that sort of...
Just, just on that, Mr. McLennan, it may also be the case that they might have died regionally, but the, the coronial is actually conducted here in Sydney, isn't it the case?
Generally, if the person's died regionally, the inquest will be conducted regionally. The coroner will go out to the, to the point, to that area where the, because the witnesses come from there, again, it's easier for the families.
That's, that's not the evidence we've received.
I can cite matters if you want, I can give you a list.
I think the issue you, you raised, where someone might perhaps die at a correctional facility in Sydney, but the family's from, from country in New South Wales, it's difficult for families.
Do you provide transport and accommodation support services?
If they're a witness to the inquest, they, they, they can get witness expenses, but there's no other provision.
I'm talking about mum and dad and brother and sister and aunt, who, mum can come, but she needs the support of the other family members. There's, there's, it seems to me that there's nowhere in the New South Wales government that has a policy to help families in the most practical, most practical and obvious place that they, they need help. Is that right?
I agree, I agree, but that, that there's no, for our point of view, we don't have the, we don't have the funding to do it, but it, it is, it is a problem.
Okay. I know the time.
Mrs. Scisera, I want, for the record, on ad hoc requests, there's some ad hoc funding occasionally available for corrective services, but that requires, first of all, a discretion, it requires someone to know you can ask for it, and then, of course, sometimes it's refused. So I, I note that on occasion it's happened, but surely we can all agree that that would be a good thing as a basic, well, I can't ask you about a policy point, I think it would be a good basic provision for families, would, would lease a lot of the stress for families and perhaps make their engagement with all of your services much easier at that point.
I think Mr. McLennan basically agreed with you. I know the time, I thank the witnesses for giving evidence. The committee has resolved that answers to questions taken on notice be returned within 21 days, and the committee secretary will be in touch with those of you who have taken questions on notice about the terms of those questions and just to make sure you've got clarity about what you're expected to return to us in the 21-day timeframe. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I know it's finished, but can I just say one thing?
You may.
Respectfully, I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name.
Mr. Shubridge?
Sorry, Mr. Shubridge. Just in terms of that idea, I, I think on notice about the data is really important, but just for the purposes of the committee, I'd like it noted that where you had referred to being data-driven, I think it's important to clarify that point to being data-informed, because the idea of the timely, I'm sorry, I'm nervous now.
Don't be nervous.
The idea of the timeliness standards is about being data-informed. So data-driven would imply an input and an output and a process in which you have identified in your questioning. Where data-informed is about, actually, through the coronial services committee, each agency is committed to timeliness standards across each point in time, across the entire... coronial pathway, so we can be informed through that data to make decision points on where we can create opportunities for improvement, timeliness and effective systemic change, and they're the right, uh, if you will, um, governance model that can actually inform that change, thank you, sir.
Well, no, and I think it's, I think, I understand that, that, that may be your position, and I accept that that's the position that you come from.
Mr. Shubridge, it's not a matter of dialogue, she's given the further information, the committee will make whatever use it can of the information it's got, thank you all for your time, you're all excused, I might just keep the...